I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we sure can. I'm waiting for someone to let me into the Zoom meeting. And then I can see you too.
Well, I can't see myself, so I I'm wondering if he's got the video off. I'm trying to set up my camera so so that it works here.
I can see you.
You can see me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Cheryl, any additional speakers?
Madam Mayor, I know you'd like me to type in in favor or opposed. Can I use a raised hand?
I think I think they prefer you to type into the chat. Is that okay?
Okay, so I'll.
Well, I think if you go down to your reactions buttons, isn't there like a a yes or no? There's a there's a check mark or an X. You could use that if you want, Wes.
Perfect, I'll do that.
Do you see them when you should be under your reactions?
Yeah, no, I got them, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, and it is now one o'clock. So I will call this meeting to order for Tuesday, October 17th. Attendance at the start of the meetings, Council Jolly online.
I am just making a tea.
That's all good, I'm just making sure you're there. And I don't know if you heard, Wes wants to use his checkmark and X for voting, so you can do the same if you want. So everyone is here at the start of the meeting with Council Jolly and Councilor Broadhead in virtual. I need a motion to adopt the agenda, but before we do, I am adding an emergent item. So at jet item number 10, we're going to have a conversation about driveway fire pits. And so that's one addition. Anything else, Mr. Fletcher?
No, your worship.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Councilor McKay, go ahead.
Thanks, that the October 17th, 2023 agenda be adopted as amended.
I don't know if that's really as amended because it's on there, right?
We're adding a new item.
Okay, yes, as amended then. All right, call for the vote. Vote is closed and that is unanimous. All right, as you guys can all see, those of you who are here in person, there's a fair amount of people in the gallery today. Most of them are registered for the public hearing, but we do have two presentations outside of the public hearings. The first one is something I've been looking forward to, Richard Miller from Neutral Ground. So welcome, Mr. Miller, Richard, whatever, however you prefer. Thank you for coming. You have five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thanks very much. Yeah, my name is Richard Miller, and I'm here to tell you about Neutral Ground and why it exists. Neutral Ground is a new local nonprofit organization with a mission to fight social isolation and encourage community. The issues of loneliness and social isolation brought to the fore by the COVID epidemic are an ongoing and increasing social problem, especially prevalent over our extended winters. Our solution at Neutral Ground is to run safe, inclusive events where community members are welcome to meet and connect over shared interests and activities. A slice of every part of our community is affected by social isolation, including those on the autistic spectrum, in minority groups, and people with other social challenges. We cater to all ages and try to ensure that our events are accessible by everyone, free and close to public transit. Unfortunately, the people who need connection the most are the ones that find Neutral Ground the most daunting to attend. Therefore, we have consulted with other organizations to make our events feel welcoming and safe for as many people as possible. For example, we have a red-green sticker system for attendees. A red stick, you're given one when you come in, a red sticker means I'm just browsing and I'll come and talk to you if if I need something. And green means come and talk to me. This is a very popular part of our offering and is particularly appreciated by many of our attendees. At our events, you will find many hobbies and activities for people to enjoy. Examples include knitting. Examples include knitting knitting and crocheting, video games, Lego, and a communal jigsaw puzzle. We have found that many people are much more comfortable socializing when they are doing something they enjoy. It brings out their passion and gives them confidence to communicate. Our venues include the library, schools, senior center, Out Loud, and Transitions, allowing people to meet where they feel comfortable. Creating a safe, inclusive environment where everyone can participate at their own level makes for an amazing atmosphere. Even though some people just want to do their own thing, they still like enjoying and they still enjoy being around other people. However, there are two main challenges with running Neutral Ground events. The first has been funding. So far, Neutral Ground has been funded predominantly through my donations and from those from our patrons and the board. We have also been fortunate enough to obtain two small grants for specific projects and in-kind donations from other nonprofits and local businesses. But finding money for essentials like insurance has been the biggest headache. Having limited funds leads on to our second recurring challenge, finding suitable venues. We have great sporting facilities in our city, but we need more spaces and resources available for the rest of our community so that they can gather and connect as well. St. Albert does not have a community hub or social center. So we are left relying on the generosity of other nonprofits and organizations to host us. The city does have venues such as our community halls, but they are expensive for a nonprofit such as ours, although seemingly underutilized. Other facilities like the studios in St. Albert Place are at capacity and not available for new organizations. Therefore, we ask council to consider what options you have to encourage community organizations and what spaces can be made available for community groups and projects. In summary, we have an opportunity and an obligation to address the issues of loneliness and social isolation. Inclusive access to social infrastructure for all groups, including those most at risk from social disconnection, is fundamental to building a connected community. I created Neutral Ground so there'll be somewhere for those people who find it hard to connect and make friends to do so. We create safe, inclusive spaces where the whole community can meet and connect over shared interests. It is so exciting being involved with this organization. We are only just getting started, but we have a genuine need and desire for Neutral Ground in St. Albert. Thank you for listening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and quite honestly, thank you for starting this group and noticing the gap in our community and stepping in trying to fill it. So I will open it up now to council for any questions. Council Broadhead or Council Jolly, do you have any questions? You're good. Council Brumansky, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for appearing for us today, Richard. The questions I have is, how many individuals have you helped, like, say, in the last year? You know, what's
Well, we've been running since January, and we've helped three hundred people so far.
About three hundred people, and is it very divided in age and and such, or?
Um, yeah, if I can just look, this is why I kind of brought the pictures as well, just to show you the variety of ages. So we have basically from like eight to eighty other people we get in. And we go to different locations to meet different groups, so like the senior center to let the seniors know if you're comfortable coming to us, and then schools for the kids and transitions for their own people, so it's kind of, yeah, yeah.
Excellent, and do you find that the, you know, the youth are mixing with the seniors and everybody's kind of blending together to help each other along as well?
Yeah, very much. I mean, if you, I mean, this this is kind of almost a perfect picture, the third one. You can see sort of younger people, and you've got older people as well, and sort of middle-aged people, all kind of in the same area. And having the whole community in that space just makes it feel just very nice. It's not, it's not loud or threatening, it's just welcoming to everyone, and everybody can kind of attend at their own level of comfort. They're not forced to do anything. You're not expected to do anything. But you can be around other people, you can connect when you want to connect, and you can back off when you need to back off.
Okay, and what kind of grants have you acquired to this point?
So we just had two two small ones. One was from the Rotary Club for to help us set up a website. And the other one was just a community grant from Walmart.
From, pardon me?
Walmart.
Walmart, okay. So do you plan on applying through to through the city to the community services event?
We were just applied for the, unfortunately, this year, the FCSS has a small grant available, brought to ten thousand dollars. So that's kind of, that's at the level we feel we can actually deal with.
Okay, and the space that you generally want, like, you know, you're saying you're using schools sometimes or a library space or a hall. Which is the ideal amount of space for most of the events that you're hosting?
Probably about the size of, I said basketball court is a kind of good amount of space, or such school gymnasium, something of that size. We have about, I mean, the last event, well, the last event at the library, we got sixty people in, we had ten tables, so twelve tables, so the kind of, things are getting fairly full in there.
Okay, and one last question, how often do you host your events?
At the moment, we're hosting once a month.
Once a month.
If we get the FCSS funding, then we'll be up to twice a month.
And is that on a weekend or a weekday or an evening?
Weekdays, sorry, my mistake, weekends.
Weekends.
It's completely volunteer-led, there's nobody employed in this organization, so obviously it kind of has to be weekends or evenings.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Keelig also has a question.
I think I was gonna withdraw my question, it didn't hit the button fast enough, because Council Brumansky asked everything about space and people served and clarified the ask, but again, thank you, Richard, for coming in, talking to us, and also for running the events for for residents, that's very important, thank you.
Cool, thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
So, Richard, you've been work, you have talked to the city, then you have a contact at the city, because there's so many resources within our committee. We support community services department. I always forget to name, you know, could help you with probably a list of the venues that are available in St. Albert, which ones would give special rates for not-for-profits, which ones are free. Like, there's there's, there's lots of resources at the city, so have you?
Yeah, no, no, I've been, I've been speaking to community to community services since the beginning.
Awesome.
Unfortunately, things like all the community halls that you have to pay for all the community halls, that there is I haven't found somewhere that's run by the city sort of indoors that's actually free or available to sort of community groups or nonprofits, and then I haven't seen any reduced rates either. So if they exist, I haven't been told about them yet.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not sure either. The process when we do presentations to council is we get to ask a bunch of questions of you, which we've done, and now we're going to hear one more presentation, but then we do ask questions of our staff. So I think there'll probably be some questions maybe from myself to the staff, but
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We do have one more registered speaker outside the public hearing, and that is Kim Armstrong with Public School Board, so come on down, Kim. Council, we all got a handout from the Public School Board, this is this. So go ahead whenever you're ready, five minutes.
Thank you very much. I do have slides, and I'll just say slide now, oh, I'm supposed to be doing it myself? Okay. I just don't want to follow Richard. Thank you. When's the next event? Sorry. And then do I just go right through it? Okay, maybe. Thank you, Your Honor. Good afternoon, Council. On behalf of the Board of St. Albert Public Schools, we want to acknowledge the successful passing of the Alberta Municipalities Resolution supporting advocacy to the provincial government for the infrastructure servicing and construction costs of school sites. As you may be aware, St. Albert Public Schools is sponsoring a similar position statement at our Alberta Public School Boards Association in November that will, if adopted, support and elevate the immense need for schools, not only for the children and youth in St. Albert, but for many municipalities across Alberta. The board recognizes that we are not alone. So St. Albert and St. Albert Public Schools is not in a unique situation, but with many unique drivers. We also believe that a form of we also believe that from a governance perspective, that working in solidarity will serve our students well. With the most recent, hot off the presses, September thirtieth, update of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four enrollment numbers, we are seeing the highest number of kindergarten students registered in the division's history with an overall three percent increase in student enrollment. We serve over ninety-five hundred students. Looking at the increase in student enrollment since the twenty twenty-twelve, twenty twenty-three school year, the total enrollment has increased by thirty-nine percent. We now house over twenty-seven hundred students in non-permanent classrooms, aging portables and modulars. And I am indeed coming with an ask. I'm here with a save the date. Our board would like to invite as many council members as are available to join us for thought-sharing, generative conversation and collegiality as we explore ways to work together to continue building a strong, vibrant community that provides St. Albert residents with the best possible supports and services. We heard from a little birdie, Council Mackay, that some of you haven't been in our building, and we'd love to invite you three P M, December, I have it here, fourth, for a couple hours, some food and some conversation, and looking for ways that from a governance level, we can address the issues of needed school spots for St. Albert students. Thank you very much for your time. And I'm not expecting an answer. The invitations are going to be sent out right away. Thank you very much.
I have one really quick question for you. Is this invitation on December fourth for just your school board and council, or is it a public?
It is just our school board and council members.
Okay, so we have committed the whole budget meetings that day.
Oh, hey, so we
So none of us are available. Unless you'd prefer to go there in the budget, that might actually be more fun.
Well, thank you for that. So perhaps I will get our very important person, Amy, to get in touch with your very important people who plan your schedule so that you can consider it.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, no, I think, did you have a question? Ken was looking at me.
I always look up to you. No, I was just gonna raise the same issue in relation to the conflict.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and we will forward another date or receive another date. Thank you.
Okay, any anyone have any questions about the presentation?
Sorry.
Just wondering if there's any presentation questions, looking at Natalie and Wes, no hands up. Oh, you're unmuting Natalie, you have a question?
I, you know, I was just gonna comment that, as you know, I have kids who live in portable in the St. Albert Public District, so I'm glad that you're doing the advocacy, and I look forward to touching base when when we're all available.
I was over at Lois Hall School on Friday. There's six portables there. And the grass won't grow because there's seven hundred kids stomping on it. So, yeah, I could see how crowded the schools are, for sure.
Yeah, and we are just working to work together, and and we will be in in constant communication with you because, together with solidarity, we'll figure out a solution.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Council Brumansky, you have a quick question? Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you so much, and thank you for visiting us again and providing more information. A few times I've had people ask, and I've asked you previously, how many students are like St. Albert citizens? Do you have data on that yet? I know that, you know, you see kids all over the place in sort of Northridge, and there's certain areas that there's large pockets of children, but do you do you have access to that yet?
So that is a very moving target, because students come and students go. So we have students that go to other jurisdictions, and then we have students that come. There's there is a pocket in northeast Edmonton that access our our COGTO program. However, that's got a limited enrollment because of the size of the school, and so there are guidelines around around registrations and numbers. We have been asking that question, and it is very much one of those things that we cannot we do not know how many students are are St. Albert citizens, because the school act, this is one of the complicating factors. The school act allows that that if you have a resident address within a school division, that a child can attend those schools. So does that mean a resident address of the mother or the father? And so teasing out those numbers is something that a very small administration like ours, because it is constantly changing. The work that we do, the work that we get and the numbers we get from Berger, which I understand is one of those demographic analyzing programs, it's always after the fact. And so we're really, you know, we're really working hard, and we do talk about your question, Council Brumansky, and just whether or not it's a significant number, it would make any difference. With respect to the kindergarten room enrollments, we're pretty sure that most of those are coming from St. Albert. And those, we have six hundred, over six hundred kids in almost all of our schools. So so and in the did you know that those are the latest analysis of our demographics, so it's a citywide issue.
Right. I remember on Arbor Day last year, there were so many grade ones, too, like, I was shocked how many there are, and it's exciting to see them all there in their little gloves and rubber boots and ready to go, so lots, lots of little ones in St. Albert.
Well, and they love schools love to participate in those kinds of events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the data on whether kids are from St. Albert or not is is interesting, but it's almost irrelevant until you have the data of how many St. Albert kids are going to other jurisdictions, right? It's like Victoria Performing Arts School has a lot of St. Albert kids there, like, so it's, you've got to see both sides of it.
Thank you very much for that comment, and that is one of the things that we struggle with, because we're not always sure what those number, where those numbers sit.
Because you'd have to ask Edmonton School Boards to supply that, I guess.
Yes. But we will keep struggling with that. Thank you.
All right. That is it for public presentations outside of the public hearings. So is there any business arising from either of those? I think I saw Elizabeth online, is that okay if I ask her a question? Elizabeth, I'm just wondering about the neutral ground presentation. If we do keep a list of locations in the city that might offer either free or reduced rates for not-for-profits, I was thinking like the rugby club and soccer clubs, they have space for sure, just wondering how those work.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Heron. We have been working with Richard to try and connect him with the organizations that we do know have low cost or no cost spaces available, so all of the examples that you provided, like the Community Village Food Bank and Seniors Association. We've connected them with Arts and Heritage Foundation as well, so we're trying to provide all of those spaces and places that do have free spaces available. I think part of the conversation with Richard right now is the size of the space he's looking for is starting to exceed the limits of the free spaces that are available.
Which is, I guess, a positive and a negative, that they're getting lots of people. What about the room at Service Place, formerly known as the Mournville Room? I don't know what it's called now. It's probably, do we offer that out? Then Ingraham's grabbing the mic.
Thank you, Mayor. For all of our city public spaces, they're all through our fees and charges, and there is a charge for
But there's a not-for-profit rate, for sure.
There is a not-for-profit rate, so they are subsidized, but there is a charge that's approved through our fees and charges policy.
Okay, all right. Uh, Council Broadhead has a question, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is through to administration. Mr. Fletcher, I know that you meet with the C E Os in the region regularly. The problem of increased population is not unique to St. Albert. My question to you is, is this question of the dire need for more schools within the region, is that discussed? And are there thoughts or opinions that are expressed at the C E O level of interest or help to the conversation that we may have with the school board later on?
Thank you very much, Council. The short answer to your
Thank you very much, Counselor. Uh, the short answer to your question is yes, uh, those are discussed. Um, but discussed under the, uh, I guess the umbrella envelope of growth. Uh, and so, you know, the premier has said we need a hundred and thirty thousand additional homes in Alberta in order to deal with increasing populations. Um, homes are good, um, but homes are only good if they're connected by roads with transit networks, with schools, with healthcare doctors. Um, so those are absolute conversations that are being had at the C A O table. And I think you'll see at the, uh, the upcoming housing symposium on second of November, which has been organized by the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board. That that dynamic will underpin the discussion on housing writ large from social needs all the way through to. Um, the higher end of the spectrum.
Right, thank you very much. I know, uh. We, we love to see our community grow. We love to see our province grow along with the pressures of growth come. Uh, the need for expanded everything, including schools, and we certainly want to meet the needs of our children. So it'll be interesting to see how this is developed over the coming months and, and years. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Council Broadhead. Any more questions of administrations, Council? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. There's really only one thing on consent other than the minutes. Look at Council Vermansky is quick on the draw. Go ahead.
That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one special council meeting minutes of September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and the regular council meeting minutes of October third, two thousand twenty-three. And eight point one, the Duke County Alberta Community Partnership Grant Application Support.
All right, I will call for the vote on those. Voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. So the next thing on our agenda was just approved on consent. That was the minutes from the September twenty-ninth special council meeting and our regular meeting on October third. Uh, public hearings aren't starting till two, so we have a half an hour there. Um, so let's go straight to. So then. Yeah, but I'm just gonna read what was approved on consent for. So the motion that we just approved on consent with the Le Duke. Application, let me make it bigger so I can see it. Was it the Saint Albert City Council support the Duke County submission on the regional growth study grant application to the government of Alberta? Alberta Community Partnership Program. So that was just approved on consent. All right, now we're on the internal audit work plan. I have Daria down. Um, Daria still got her to. Speak to this and present. I don't know if she is anything further other than what we heard at committee.
Um, I, I will defer to her. So I do not believe we have a formal presentation, but Daria is certainly available to, uh, answer any questions and, and walk us through the highlights.
All right, go, is no presentation, Daria? And what about the change in the bylaw? Is it, cause that was not really discussed at committee. It was separate. Marta, I don't know if you wanna. Speak to that.
Um, yeah, so, um, after the committee meeting, I met with Daria and we discussed, um. The bylaw updates, and so the bylaw will be updated in November sometime in its entirety in accordance with. What was discussed at committee on Friday. However, in preparation for the organizational meeting next week, we are suggesting. A minor amendment to the bylaw just to amend the composition, the membership composition. In time for the October twenty-fourth, um. Legislative appointments, organizational, um, meeting. Um, so that is what is before you today, and then the full update will come in November.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Councilor Mackay.
Yeah, sorry, just following up on your, um. Direction, instruction, so, um. We are going to make, if we go through all the recommended motions, that will amend, that will remove. That what's proposed will remove the mayor and replace them with a member of council. That, that's.
Which could still be the mayor, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and if there was any other changes that we wanted to put forward, that wouldn't ever come this time, or would it come, uh?
You may suggest them today, however, knowing that the full bylaw amendment is coming in November. And we'll have a full presentation and a fulsome discussion. I'd suggest it would probably make more sense to hold off until the full bylaw amendment comes.
I, I just wanna confirm. I think I agree with you. I think that's a little bit more appropriate time because you get a little bit more background. Thanks.
I agree, thanks.
Are you thinking of any particular changes? Okay, let's make me wait. Needles, pins and needles. Uh, any questions then of the work plan or the bylaw? Okay, I see done. I need someone to make some motions. Go ahead, Councilor Mackay.
Well, I, I, I don't know why I had my mic on, so. Uh, that the confidential internal audit work plan, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-six. Attached to the agenda report entitled Internal Audit Steering Committee Work Plan and Bylaw twenty-three slash twenty-two-three. Internal Audit Steering Committee Amending Bylaw dated October seventeenth be approved.
All right, any comments on that, Councilor Mackay?
It's a little hard to have comments on a confidential internal. In public, other than a great deal of work has gone into this. And I certainly don't have any.
Anything for.
Concerns or comments in relation to the identified, uh, risks in the plan.
All right. Seeing no one else, I will call for the vote. Vote is closed and that passes unanimously. Uh, second motion.
Yeah, that bylaw twenty-three slash twenty-two-three internal audit steering committee being amendment number three to bylaw twenty-five, twenty-sixteen be read up. First time.
Anything on that?
No, I didn't realize it was twenty-sixteen when we approved.
Yeah, it's been a while. All right, I see no comments. I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. You get a second reading?
Yep, the bylaw twenty-three slash twenty-two-three be read a second time, no comment.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Council Hughes, you want to unanimous consent?
The unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw twenty-three slash twenty-two-three.
So everybody's requesting to make motions now. All right, call for the vote. There we go. Vote is closed. That passes unanimously, so we can go to third reading. Yeah, sorry. You wanna make the motion? Okay, go ahead, Councilor Mackay. Anyone can, doesn't matter.
That bylaw twenty-three slash twenty-two-three be read a third time and I'll let. Think, Councilor.
I just wanted to, um, thank administration for this fast turnaround. I mean, we just met just a couple weeks ago and. It was very tight, especially considering a long weekend just came after it, and yet we were able to do this. I think it will. Just out of that flexibility on who the council members are, I think will just help us overall and help the committee moving forward. So. Just really wanna thank you guys for your work on this. I was surprised when it came forward so quickly.
All right. Anything from you, Councilor Mackay?
Ditto.
Okay, call for the vote. Vote, is it, so I missed it. Voting closed? Yeah, okay, passed unanimously. All right, we're onto our emergent items, um. Is, is Everett presenting this or who's presenting this, Mr. Fletcher? Or are you?
No, it's. Uh, in terms of, uh, I believe we've got Everett Cook on. You're talking about the. Your item, the fire pits. Yes, I'll ask Everett to make the initial commentary. Bottom line is that it's, uh, the current approvals exist solely on weekends, and obviously there's been a desire potentially to do so for Halloween, and that's obviously driving the discussion. Everett?
All right, so, thank you, C A O Fletcher, I appreciate the comment, and good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, as C A O Fletcher pointed out, administrations before you with the request to amend the driveway fire pit program. Uh, which was passed by council motion and became a permanent program within Saint Albert in May of two thousand twenty-one. The fire pit program was created as an initiative to assist Saint Albert residents with the recovery from the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And when the program was first created before coming permanent, driveway fire pits were permitted, uh, on or for, uh, October thirty-first, so Halloween. Every Saturday in December, uh, and then every Saturday, it was extended after that from every Saturday from January thirtieth to. April twenty-fourth of that state or of two thousand twenty-two. Today, the program only permits driveway fire pits each Saturday, no other dates. So administration is requesting to add October thirty-first of each year, so Halloween to this program. The request addresses past practices of the city of Saint Albert. Annual inquiries from our residents to have driveway fire pits, and this direction has been approved or permanently endorsed. Uh, by the Saint Albert Fire Services. We did have, uh, we did conduct a review of complaints that have been received, uh, back to January first of two thousand twenty. In the databases, uh, contained by the fire services, no records were found with two occurrences. Um, being reported or at least tracked by municipal enforcement since two thousand twenty. The first was simply amount of boxes being burned, while the second was more related to the cleanliness of the area where the fire pit was being used. I don't believe that the activities of the folks were reckless in these cases. Having said that, I believe Ledge Services has a proposed motion which they were going to share, thanks to them for drafting it for us on short notice. And, uh, again, the intent, folks, is to have Halloween or October thirty-first added, uh, of each year added to this program permanently.
All right, and what, can we see the motion that is prepared just so we can kind of understand what we're voting on if we go this way? And in the meantime, while they're getting that up, I'll go to Council Killick.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Cook for presenting. Um, just a question to clarify what fire pits mean. There, there's wood burning fire pits. And then there's the propane. Uh, powered fire, I don't know what we call a fire pit, I guess, but they're propane powered. Does, does this, uh, apply to both, or is this specific just to, uh, wood burning? Um, scenario?
Uh, I understand that the current program in place applies to both L P G, so propane and class A, which is wood burning fire pits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Council Jolly.
Thank you. So I, I think this is. Great, but, um, I, I'm wondering that rather than say October thirty-first, could we just say. And any other special events as authorized by the C A O. I know that we do that for a lot of other, like. Exceptions to, to bylaws, um, and that way, you know, if. One day there's this, you know, unicorn day is February twenty-first, the C A O could do the same thing.
I'm gonna look at Marta.
Certainly, it's possible to draft the motion that way, um, and, and, um, if I may, while I have the floor, we are, um, recommending on the legal side. An update to the fire services bylaw within the next year. Anyway, and so we would enshrine this program in the bylaw, so it wouldn't need to be an exception to the bylaw, but having the resolution from council to give us that flexibility on the. Administration side is, uh, I think a great idea for flexibility.
So, Ma- Mayor, I'm happy to bring that forward if Ledge wants to kind of draft that for me.
Okay. So that would, that would allow for East Easter's and stuff like that, so. Is it approval of the C A O or the fire chief, which, which would be better? I don't even know.
I, I think, uh, should probably read out for to, uh.
To you.
Legal, but it should read the C A O from a pure authority's perspective, and I can delegate that.
That's correct.
Council Jolly, I'm wondering if you would take it as, um, October thirty-first and any other events designed by the C A O, so that it's quite clear about the standing order.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, so go ahead. Council Hughes has a question as well.
Okay, I just had to, um, to Everett, um, or maybe, maybe Marta, but she's busy. Is there any intention of expanding it past the Saturdays when this bylaw comes forward next year, um, to also include Fridays, for example, or? Cause you, I'm just wondering, cause I know initially there's a pilot to see. You know, how it would respond in the community, et cetera, on any issues. So is there any thought about allowing it for both weekend days?
Um, through, uh, through the mayor to, uh, to members of council or to, uh, to council. Um, there's, there's definitely an opportunity. We can do that. I'm not opposed to it at all. Um, as, uh, Marta had mentioned, we are planning an update to the fire service bylaw, uh, here later on this fall or early into next year. And that is something that we can definitely table with a working group and, uh, to have a look at what days, uh, special days, and of course. Should it be expanded to both Fridays and Saturdays? We can bring that forward. I, I have no problem looking at that.
Yeah, I thought I'd just bring it up for discussion, not for today, but for the future. And also just perhaps even on the Sundays when there's a long weekend, like just allow the full weekend to. Be utilized, I guess, for people that wanna get together. So not a rush for today. I'm not gonna bother trying to make more things go on the fly, but if. That, I just thought that might be something you might wanna consider when we discuss this again. That's it, thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna let these, oh, Council Killick, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, kind of follow up on the days available. How, how do we handle, um, a request for fire pit? During a, a block party that might be on a Wednesday or Thursday? Uh, how, how is that addressed?
Excellent, uh, through the merit of Council Killick, um, a, a permit is required for individuals, uh, for a specific. Homeowner or event, um, not on a mass scale, a permit is required. Now, those are the same conditions that would be imposed under this fire pit program, meaning you have to keep ten feet back and such from anything that's combustible trees, fences and such. Uh, but a permit is required that is submitted to the fire offices and reviewed by a fire prevention team.
Thank you. So this doesn't exclude that from happening. Yeah, that perfect answer, thank you.
Council Vermansky.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The only, uh, comment I have is it's mentioned in the by, in the motion on the floor as a Friday and what I'm seeing in front of me. So I'm not sure if we're voting on Fridays today or.
Sorry, say that again?
It's already got Fridays and Saturdays in the motion. That I'm seeing on my screen, so.
Be resolved, the fire pit program became a permanent program on Fridays and Saturdays with the passage of that motion and be expanded to. Halloween each year and any other special events as directed by the C A O. Fridays only mentioned once, am I wrong?
Right, but it was mentioned by fire services that it's just Saturday, and then Council Hughes mentioned adding Friday down the road, but it's already in this.
It's always, sorry, it's Fridays, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So in fact, Marta, maybe you just wanna provide that context, please.
So when we took, took a look at the legislative history, the motion that was passed did read Fridays and Saturdays, so it currently stands that Fridays and Saturdays are included. But I may not have made that really clear when I spoke to Mister Cook, so that might be the reason for that.
We'll keep Sundays in the consideration for long weekends, just throwing that out there.
All right, we have a motion in front of us, uh. I see Council Jolly's name beside it, so that's you making the motion?
Yeah, so that the fire pit program, which became a permanent program on Fridays and Saturdays with the passage of council motion, C M twenty-one zero nineteen on May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Be expanded to October thirty-one, Halloween Day, each year and any other special events as directed by the C A O.
All right, I will accept that. Any opening comments?
I, you know, I love this program, um, it, it's been so much fun to do this on Halloween. Um, I've been very lucky to sit in the front. Of neighbors' houses around a fire on Halloween, um, and I would love to never see this at council again. Um, because I think, uh, we have the support of the community in doing that, and there's no need to bring it back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jolly. Anyone else? Seems pretty simple, but I'm just gonna say that I'm actually super proud of our residents that actually. Made the attempt to see if this was allowed instead of just doing it without it being permitted. Um, we, I know I might have just done it anyway, uh, but as the driveway. Driveway fire pit program on Halloween especially really drives, um. The delivery of candy, et cetera, to the sidewalk, which is so good for accessibility, and Saint Albert's been so strong in the. Treat accessibility initiative that's sweeping across Canada, so if anyone's listening. Treat accessibility uh initiative that's sweeping across Canada. So if anyone's listening. Uh, put up a table on the end of your driveway so the kids that have mobility issues or sensory issues. Um, have easy access to the candy. Make sure your candy is gluten free. Joy of fire. Enjoy your neighbors. Think it's gonna be a great night, especially if the weather keeps up. Anthony to close, Council Jolly? Call for the vote? Voting's closed. And that motion passes unanimously. All right, we have fifteen minutes. I will give council one of two choices. We can. Go on to Counselor Hughes' motion, or we can take a quick bit of a break because. We might be in our chairs for a while with these public hearings, so. And caps, okay, I will have to do that too. Why don't we take a break? Um, and then we'll come back because I think these public hearings might be a while. So we'll reconvene at two o'clock uh for Wes and. Uh, sorry. Would that be like? One o'clock for you, Wes? Okay, see you guys in fifteen.
Yeah. See you.
Thank you, that is my cue that is now two o'clock. Perfect. I am, okay, so council, we have two public hearings today. We're going to start with the Ville Giroux bylaws eighteen, which is MDP nineteen, which is the Ville Giroux ASP. And twenty is the land use bylaw amendments. So I'm going to open the public hearing for bylaws eighteen, nineteen and twenty. As usual, I need to ask, are there any counselors that have any conflict of interest? Let me get this zoomed up. I see none, so you guys are all familiar, but for the public, I will read that will be following procedure by law twenty four. We're going to hear from our administration, a presentation, then the applicant is here, so we will go to the applicant to hear any comments from them. And then the public, and we do have some registered speakers. And you counsel will have an opportunity to ask all of those people from administration applicant and the public as many questions as you want. We have some written submissions that were in your package, and we have nothing further as far as I know. From ledge, nothing, no further written, okay? And then we will close the public hearing and enter into debate, okay? So let us start with a presentation from administration, Mr. Fletcher, I'll introduce it.
Thank you very much, your worship, I don't have anything specific to introduce, it's probably best if we just push it on, I believe Suzanne is going to take the lead on the presentation, so I will defer to her, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to have to tip over the screen here. Does everyone hear me okay?
We can sort of hear you, it's a little quiet.
Oh, okay, you're all.
And a little. Just putting on some different headphones.
Is that better?
That's way better, yeah, and you're, we can see your slides, but we can also see the the notes on the slides, you might want to go to the presenter version of it.
Yep.
There we go, perfect.
There we are. So, good afternoon, everyone, good afternoon, council, I am Suzanne Rube, city planner, and I will be presenting on the Ville Giroux application.
Okay, so the mic is really muffled again, maybe you have to hold it right up.
We'll try like way up top.
Sorry, sorry about that, but we need to hear what you're saying, so go ahead.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So this application is made by Sidex Developments to enable a development concept for two hundred Giroux Road within Ville Giroux. This land is on the west side of the Ville Giroux neighborhood and is undeveloped. It is bordered to the north by Giroux Road, to the west by Ray Given Drive, and to the south by the CN rail line.
Suzanne, I'm going to just ask you to slow down a bit, because this is a, that's very fast, and this is a really important public hearing, so go slow.
Okay. This concept comprises of an expanded area of low density residential, as well as the addition of a high rise and high density residential multi-family development. The higher density site proposes two residential towers up to sixty five meters in height with a combined approximately three hundred eighty units. To enable this concept before you today are three amending bylaws, an amendment to the municipal development plan, adding notwithstanding clauses, amendments to the Ville Giroux area structure plan to amend the future land use and development densities, and amendments to the land use bylaw, this bylaw includes redistricting, text amendments, and a height schedule. Within the municipal development plan, map three, urban structure and general land use identifies the subject area of Ville Giroux as neighborhood policy area. The neighborhood policy area is defined in the MDP as being predominantly residential areas made up of low-rise housing along with schools, parks, shops, and services. The MDP also indicates that high-density developments should be located around a TOD site, which is transit-oriented development, near the trail corridor and near rapid transit lines and stations, and with the highest densities envisioned downtown. These locations are noted on map three, which is currently on the screen. The Ville Giroux neighborhood is located where the MDP has prioritized outward growth. However, it is not identified as a location for intensification, as the site is currently greenfield and has not reached full build-up. As referenced earlier, the amendments to the area structure plan includes amending the future land use concept. This removes medium density from the amendment area to expand low-density residential and include high-density residential. The reconfiguration does enable the consolidation of park space. And within the proposed high-density site, the applicant has also requested an allowance for increased densities up to two hundred dwellings per residential hectare. Some lands within Ville Giroux outside of the application areas have already been developed, and some have received development permits. Factoring in these approved developments, the dwelling numbers and population is higher than what the ASP had originally projected. The application as proposed would increase those numbers further due to both more low-density housing, as well as their request for a high-density site with three hundred eighty units. In total, these changes raise the density ratio for the Ville Giroux neighborhood from fifty-two dwelling units per net residential hectare to eighty-six point six. First of the land use bylaw amendments proposed is to redistrict lands within Ville Giroux. Some of the lands are currently urban reserve and others are R one low-density residential. The redistricting would assign land uses to all urban reserve lands and upzone the R one residential to the newer RX and RXL residential districts. One of the proposed parcels is an R four high-density residential site. The R four site was originally identified in the ASP as a medium-density site, which would have been projected as an R three or R three A district. The chart at the bottom of the current slide shows the increases in dwelling units and residence between an R three A medium-density residential, which would house up to three hundred thirteen residents, and a standard R four district, which can house approximately four hundred seventy-one residents on the site. The proposal at hand today would house up to six hundred sixty-nine residents on the same parcel. Along with the redistricting are text amendments to the high-density R four district. The first text amendment is to increase density, specifically R four districted lands within two hundred Giroux Road, from the current maximum of one hundred forty-one dwelling units per hectare to two hundred dwelling units per hectare. The site is approximately one point nine hectares in size, so the proposed increase in density would project a population increase of one hundred ninety-eight more residents. To note, the size is approximate, a subdivision cannot incur until the site has a district besides urban reserve. The second text amendment is to allow heights on that same high-density site within two hundred Giroux Road up to sixty-five meters, which is in the range of sixteen to twenty stories. Currently, the high-density R four district allows heights up to twenty-five meters with bonuses up to thirty-five meters if specific amenity requirements are met. The text amendment also references schedule F of the land use bylaw to further restrict the location of these heights. The text amendment to allow heights up to sixty-five meters is accompanied by a height schedule, which is on the screen for you. If approved, this would be added to schedule F of the land use bylaw as map three. The dark shaded boxes are where heights are proposed to reach up to sixty-five meters. Outside of those boxes, the standard twenty-five meter height would apply. For context, the maximum height in schedule F approved at Riverbank Landing is fifty meter. As part of the application process, there is always public engagement. Prior to submitting a application, the applicants are required to host a public engagement meeting. This meeting was held online, hosted by the applicants, and attended by one member of the public and two counselors. After an application is submitted, administration circulates to residents and businesses around the amendment area, as well as to internal and external stakeholders. Both the notice of a pre-application meeting and the submitted application were mailed to residents and businesses in a one-hundred-meter radius around the full Ville Giroux ASP boundary, which encompassed four hundred ninety-eight addresses. For internal comments received, economic development identified that the proposal could support a robust economy, housing diversity, and tax income. They also identified a potential for the development to complement the Lakeview Business District. From transportation services, the roundabout at Verschlei and Villelaman is estimated to continue to operate well under the increased volumes. There is a single vehicular access into and out of Ville Giroux, but due to the increased density proposed and emergency egress is necessary. This will be located at the proposed PUL, which runs from the low-density residential directly to Giroux Road. Servicing capabilities to support the land uses and densities proposed has been confirmed. Long-range planning has identified that the development plan still results in an auto-reliant community. The application does not fully align with MDP policy. So getting compliance, the proposed amendments do not require circulation to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board. The municipal development plan was written with the direct involvement and direction of public and council. As such, it may be seen that the document is owned by council. The role of administration is to apply the policies and intents of the document. Any recommendations provided by administration in relation to applying the plan and its policies, so as to see the future community vision described within Flourish come to fruition, are constrained to reviewing whether the proposal aligns with the statements and intent of the document as approved by council. The Municipal Government Act requires that statutory plans be consistent with one another. Development, municipal development plan prevails over an area structure plan and an area structure plan prevails over the land use bylaw. The Planning and Development Department has identified that the proposal does not fully align with the direction or vision of Flourish. High-rise developments are not envisioned within the neighborhood policy area. The location is not identified as one of the target locations for high-density, and two hundred dwellings per hectare is not in alignment with the neighborhood policy area. Allowing density and scale at such proposed by this application may negatively affect the ability of high-density target areas such as downtown TODs and trail corridor to reach the intensities envisioned by MDP Flourish. In addition, the proposal does not provide transition in heights and built form between the low-density residential at eleven meter in regulated heights to the proposed towers of sixty-five meters. And the proposal promotes a high concentration of multi-unit development with limited available amenities such as school, shops, and works, and remains auto-reliant despite the high density. Therefore, the recommendation of administration is that the public hearing be closed, bylaws eighteen, nineteen, and twenty of twenty twenty-three are defeated. We have, however, proposed or provided an alternative. If council decides that the application at hand is acceptable within the neighborhood policy area, the provided bylaw eighteen slash twenty twenty-three to amend MDP Flourish by the addition of targeted notwithstanding clauses should be accepted prior to the ASP and LUB amendments to retain statutory policy alignment. Administration identifies that the risks to this alternative are that this may indicate to administration and development industry that the scale and density proposed is acceptable anywhere identified as neighborhood policy in St. Albert. Additionally, this may negatively affect the high-density target locations identified by the NTP to achieve their development potential. For this alternative, the public hearing must be closed prior to council debate or bylaw readings. To give all three readings to a bylaw within a single sitting of council, a motion of unanimous consent must pass before considering third reading. And a bylaw presented to council today should be read in a numerical order to ensure statutory alignment remains intact throughout the process. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Suzanne, we'll go to questions, but I'm just going to make sure I'm completely understanding. If council wants to push forward with this, we need to pass the alternative motions, which, mind if my page number is wrong, because this is the first download of the agenda package, but all the, it essentially comes in the MDP with all the notwithstanding clauses, is that?
Correct.
Okay, great.
The very long list of alternative.
Yeah, so there was a bunch, thirteen point one point sixteen, thirteen point two, but so I feel like thirteen point one sixteen was the one proposed by the applicant, is that correct? And, and then planning added in the other ones?
Uh, the exact wording that was provided by the applicant was a little bit different.
Okay.
Done like separate not withstandings for each section.
So was the wording proposed by the applicant in our package here? Hello, overall. Oh, yeah. Okay, it's on page four of thirteen, okay, just making sure I got it all. All right, so any questions of administration? This is your chance, council. Counsel Hughes.
Okay, so let's just go back over to, just so we know what we're voting on again, so, because we do have recommendations to do amendments, and then we have the recommendations if we want these notwithstanding, so if we actually approve the recommended motions, what is the end result?
So the alternative motions, you mean?
No, like we have recommended motions in front of us, right?
If, if those are approved, this development does not go through, no changes are made to the MDP, the ASP, or the LUB, and they have to wait six months to reapply.
Because the recommended motions are that bylaw being amended to be read a first time.
And then defeated.
None of them say, okay. Okay, so we want to read all of them and then defeat them, and if we don't, otherwise, we have to the notwithstanding, okay, I understand.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just trying to catch up here, I guess you guys were on lap two, and I thought I was ahead, so, okay, thank you.
All right, Counsel Jolly.
Yeah, I just want to ask the question about, so increasing the low-density allotment. Just to clarify, it would be possible that just all the low-density would be developed, and then the high-density could stall, like there, there's no rules about which would have to be developed first?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have right now.
Okay, Council McKay.
Yeah, if I could get administration just to back up on their presentation to the implications of the notwithstanding, I think it was second last slide. So it, they, on the first bullet to prove, so I mean, your sub-bullet, your second one on the top one, so may indicate to administration developers that the scale and density proposed is acceptable, so you're, you're indicating that by approving the notwithstanding that you would then, it could have wide-scale implications for every other ASP in the city, including while we don't have old ASPs for downtown, but for some of our other newer neighborhoods, is that what you're, you're indicating by that comment?
The notwithstanding clauses themselves are specific to two hundred Giroux Road. So those clauses wouldn't make the wide-scale change, it's just that the, the way administration has written the document and interpret the document is that this is not in keeping with what was envisioned for the neighborhood area. If council directs us that this is what you would like to see in that area, then we will keep that in mind if there are any future similar applications.
But, so at one point in our backgrounder, you do identify that the development officer has discretion, right, in relation to, so you're not recommending some of the, some of this going through, and I'm just scaling through here, and I might have to come back to it, Madam Mayor, in relation to it.
Take your time.
Yeah, no, I am. When you're my age, that's all you have.
The redistricting to include the R four is not as much of a concern as the increased heights above anything that we have in described in our land use bylaw, as well as the increase in densities. So the two main concerns are the the large increase in density and I guess the, the units and heights.
I think that's exactly what I was referring for, to the R four, still keeps the development officer the discretion to approve or whatever, so I think that's what I wanted to make sure I clarified, because I thought the two statements were inconsistent in relation to one versus what I mentioned earlier, and you're telling me it isn't, or it is?
Sorry, can your.
So, sorry, so I mean, so what I indicated in before, so may indicate that that the scale and proposed is acceptable to anything, so you're talking about something entirely different, you're talking about what's in R four versus what's in the different heights and density, so I mean, that's where I'm confused, because our.
Current R four height is, is twenty-five meters, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The current R four heights are twenty-five meters, the discretion that the development officers have is to go up to thirty-five meters, and with the application at hand is to include basically an exception in the R four district to allow this specific site to go up to sixty-five meters. So it's that extra thirty meters again. That, that's quite a difference.
You know, so.
Concern that we have is the increase to, if it was just an R four redistricting, that would result in a different recommendation, but it's the R four with the exemption to go up to sixty-five meters is the concern.
Okay, because the one I'm, I'm actually found it here, what I was wondering about, what I saw as an inconsistency is on page eight of thirteen in the document or page twenty-four in our package, and right at the top, it's talking about these allowances are at the discretion of the development officer at time of development permit, whereas the text amendments proposed would have created a site specific by rights to reach, so.
So that is correct, so that's not inconsistent. Currently, the R four district gives discretion to the development officer to add the extra ten meters from twenty-five to thirty-five. If you, if council approves this amendment as presented, well, approves the, the alternative motion, there would be no discretion of the development officer, the height, the maximum height would be at the sixty-five or six, sorry, sixty or sixty-five.
Okay, all right, okay, now I, I think I follow in relation to the specifics. I'm just, I'm just was concerned in the generalities of that one comment versus something that I think is specific to this particular amendment by the applicant, that's all I'm trying to see, if there's a I, I just still have to resolve that in my head, and I'm not sure if I'm asking the right questions to do that, and I might have to ask, think about a little bit more, and
but is it, are you wondering if by making this change, it's specific to this instance, or if it becomes widespread across the entirety of the MDP from an R four district?
Yeah.
And my understanding is I stand to be corrected, Christina, but I believe what we're talking about is specific to this particular site, right? And the changes would not be applicable broadly?
That is correct, but what we, by approving it, you're signaling to the develop, you could be, by approving this change, you could be inadvertently signaling to the development industry that other areas that are identified as neighborhoods may also come in and apply for this level of density and height.
But, but if that were to happen, they would each be dealt with as individual cases.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Fletcher, because I, I just see a big leap in generalization here in that comment, so.
So currently, within our four, the development officers can only prove, their discretion only goes up to thirty-five meters, they the discretion council has given them doesn't extend, extend beyond that. If the land use bylaw clauses are approved by council, then at this specific address, that would be, become a by right development.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think I've made my concerns in relation to, I think there's some other statements in the backgrounder that are really speculative and really a generalization, but I can deal with those later.
True debate, okay.
Yeah.
Counsel Kilik.
Thank you, just to start off with a real simple question. These two towers being proposed so close to Big Lake, was any consideration or even discussion held relative to migratory or flight path impacts?
A short answer, no, that's not something that came up in our circulation.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, it's not something that came up in our circulation.
Okay.
So, so no consideration to, to that, would, would that have been a normal question, like we, we requested a developer to provide shadow documentation and other environmental impact studies? Is, is, again, is that something that was missed, or is not in our standard package of of things to look at, or?
I'm assuming this was circulated through the environment department, who would be aware of those impacts.
Right, wouldn't it come a developer?
Wouldn't it come a development certificate state like when it when it was actually?
Oh, yeah, I'll go to these guys. Just good point.
So it's not a standard request and because this wasn't an amendment brought forward or being forward, but being brought forward by administration. We don't have that study to help you make these decisions. It's an amendment being brought forward by the developer. So we're just evaluating what we have received. But it isn't a standard set of criteria that we do look at.
Okay, so but we're when a developer brings this forward, we look at traffic impacts, we look at parking impacts, we look at shadow impacts. There they are listed in in the backgrounder. Just wondering why you know, migratory bird flight path.
It honestly and go ahead Suzanne.
Oh, I was just at the time of development permit for if development goes forward, there is regulations regarding looking for nesting birds. But as for like migration patterns through the air, that that's not a standard request.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had gonna cringe when I asked this one, offsite levees were mentioned in here for Fire Hall four going back to twenty sixteen. And I'm just unclear as to what that means in in the background or this references back to sanitary sewer, I think back when a land was owned by Gen Star. Anybody want to take a stab at what that references in the backgrounder?
Again, I I will see if the planning's got, I think in this instance, offsite lives are generally held by the engineering department and I'll see if they've got any commentary on that.
It was I I apologize, I don't have the page number that that was referenced on, but.
And I believe we've got Donnie George, she's popped up. Donnie, can I throw it to you for an initial response?
Through the chair, I I don't have the answer. Council, click if you can repeat it. I can get back to you on that.
Uh, yeah, Donnie, thank you for joining the call. In the background or and I apologize, I do not have the page number, but it references that offsite levees that were determined back in twenty sixteen, something to do with land rec zoning the land and Fire Hall number two would would have to be made whole during this to this development of this building, but I wasn't really clear what what that meant. And offsite levees are so important to us, but they also impact developers. I just wanted to make sure we had clarity in what what that meant.
Okay, if I may get your permission to get that answer back via email through Mr. Fletcher, is that acceptable?
Sure, it would be help like if if it comes up, if you can get the answer during debate, that would be really good, Donnie. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Another related question maybe that I I would ask is in the background, it also notes that Giroux is a primarily a truck route to handle all of the increased traffic. But then it references that Vilne would be made a truck route also to handle the traffic. But I I thought we were moving away from Vilne being a designated high traffic dual lane truck route to handle traffic because we've in fact made Vilne already a a single lane road. So it it says that in the backgrounder as well that just a point of clarification, what is, how are we handling the traffic there? And maybe maybe that's a question for Dean. I just see him joining the call. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, counselor. And I think, you know, again, this is the difference between what was foreseen when the original plan was put together and obviously the impacts of which we can have some fidelity on the first, second, but the third and fourth order a little more esoteric, obviously. So I'll stop there and Dean, perhaps you can weigh in on the the road designation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fletcher and through you, Counsel Kilik. To answer your question is that's correct. I don't have the exact details of the background or whatnot, but we know as as an update to the road classifications and the intent for the network that Billanu won't be a designated large load route. Fowler Way will be ultimately what is what will be kind of operating as a as a key arterial and large load designation along with your room and Ray Given Drive. So that may be a required update in regards to the background information that had been provided to council.
Okay, thank you. Last question, it's just around fire services and do do we actually have fire equipment that can put out a fire at sixty five meters or again, would this require something new?
I'm gonna pass on to Adrian because he has a lot of information about this and it's generally at those heights, you don't actually have a fire truck that goes that high, but I think it's sprinkler. So Adrian, can you provide more perspective?
Yeah, I think we have the tallest aerial truck you can get. Building codes now put in sprinkler systems, right? There's no ladder that will ever reach twenty stories.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor Heron. So the building itself becomes its own firefighting apparatus. There are hose bibs on the floors and there's sprinkling requirements when you get to that that height. So when when firefighting occurs in a tall building, they actually hook to the pressurized system of the building itself. You don't yeah, you wouldn't have it. I don't I don't know how, what kind of counterweight you'd need to have a twenty story ladder. It'd be something.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, I I guess I should have asked the question that it won't require us to do in
Okay.
to purchase any new firefighting. And I I apologize, I I should have asked it that way, like it won't require us to purchase any other additional new firefighting equipment.
Yeah, not to my knowledge. I don't think that that came up from emergency services during any of the reviews, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and perhaps I could ask Chief Cook just to weigh in because, you know, intuitively, there may be some training requirements. There'd be some things short of a new engine or new apparatus that that may be required.
Good afternoon, everyone. To the question and Adrian Adrian's absolutely bang on with his response. The building itself does become its own apparatus with respect to firefighting capabilities. Our aerial devices do reach up a certain height, but for a twenty story building, you rely on the on the systems put in place. So for example, a fire truck that arrives will actually tag into the standpipe system and take from a hydrant water and pressurize the system internally so that crews going to eighteen or twenty four, then twentieth floor can then tag into that standpipe system and fight the fire from that floor. With respect to training, every every new building or type of building that comes to town requires training, additional training. We can address that through operational budgets, I'm confident. But with respect to the question, do we require another piece of firefighting apparatus? No. We are currently procuring our second piece or secondary of device right now and I'd be very comfortable in saying we'd be well equipped to deal with a situation in that building.
But thank you.
Counsel Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to administration for putting forward this presentation. This is this is an interesting public hearing, to say the least, and certainly an interesting proposal by the applicant. So just further to the questioning of Counsel Mackay. Sort of the impacts of the recommendations, you've made some statements that I think are speculative. And so City of St. Albert adds approximately thirty and three hundred and forty resident housing units per year. Okay, fair enough. And then you make by approving this potential development. Other areas may not see development. What do you base that on? Is this, is it a zero sum game, meaning that we only get three hundred and forty? Or perhaps maybe we can get six hundred because now we have different opportunities. Do you want to make a comment around that?
That number of three hundred and forty just comes from historical data of how many dwelling units we've had apply for permits each year. So that's low density residential, medium and high, so it's it's across the whole gamut. So if these all get built in one year, then maybe that's the full market. But it wasn't so much about the market share overall for one year. It's more if the density is here, it may affect the ability of the densities in say, the downtown or nearer transit stations. There might not be that same market ask in those areas.
No, there might not be, but there might be too. So I so to my point, it's not as if there aren't a number of reasons to to consider such a development. Counsel, Mr. Fletcher, are we going to hear a presentation from economic development as to why they would support such a a development?
Counsel, no, you're not. The administrative recommendation, you could certainly ask questions and economic development will stand by to to provide their perspective on it. But the administrative recommendation is very clear based on the hierarchy of statutory plans. To your point that the language is caveted for a reason, right? You know, these are our potential. It would be, I think, irresponsible of us not to highlight the potential consequences. But you're right, we don't know, which is why, you know, words like may and could absolutely have been used and nor can we forecast the market. We don't know what what the market capacity is in terms of new developments and ultimately people who will come in. So it's a consideration. It's certainly not a nail in the coffin to use the vernacular, but there's no specific presentation from economic development.
Do you have question? Do you have questions for for Mr. Erickson? I think that's who's online. You're good, Wes?
Well, let me think about that. Come back to me later. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Counsel McKay is gonna jump in there, so.
I mean, you you followed in on exactly where I was going, I believe Counselor brought in. I I mean, we've heard some may or could or speculative, but we've also I'd like to hear from administration in relation to some of the economic benefits that this was it was alluded to in the presentation. And if Mr. Erickson is on, I mean, he's identified it in in our background packages on page one eight. I would if it's, I think it's entirely appropriate to hear what the what economic development feels some of the benefits of of this change would be.
This somebody
It's Spike Erickson is online and
You might want to be.
Mr. Erickson, do you need a more specific question?
Because there was a
I was asking a fairly broad question. I'm just asking, I mean, obviously you provided in in the background report what you believe some of the potential is in relation to and some of the opportunities. Can you outline what those those were? You're on mute. You're muted or your headset's not working, right?
We can give you five minutes to run down here. It looks like he's in his office. Yeah, I still can't hear you.
Perhaps, Mike, if you can, can you hear us? Can you give us thumbs up if you hear us? Okay, perhaps could you perhaps try and relocate to another station or something and see if you can get on that way? I think this is important, so we need to address it.
Well, he's in, he's in the business development. Well, why we are waiting, can can I come back to you?
Oh, yeah.
Because Counsel Jolly had her hand back up.
Absolutely.
No, I just can't see her. Where'd she go?
I'm I'm here.
All right.
Yeah, I guess this was kind of the flip side of Counsel McKay's question is I I'm wondering about the impacts is if we approve more low density. You know, the the impacts if that low density goes ahead and the high density does not. I'm, you know, I'm comparing that to the high density that we were promised in Grand and that we don't have yet. We built a whole roundabout to to handle that traffic and we're, I don't know, a decade later and and still no high rises. So I don't know if anyone can comment on on the impacts of more low density and 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 no high density.
I would say that there hasn't been any proposed changes to the road network in the neighborhood. And the proposed changes for the low density brings it up from the R one to some of those newer zones. So it'd be kind of keeping this area in keeping with, say, Riverside area using the same, offering them the same districts.
I'm I'm thinking about the economic impact.
I guess we don't want to talk too much in speculative terms. I think the one thing that the proposal and Suzanne, please correct me if I'm speaking, but by enabling the districts to go to the RX, RXL, it is actually a higher density than the R one. And so in that way, there would be a more positive return, but it's still low density. So we don't really see positive financial impact analysis until you start getting to your higher density type unit. So from that perspective, I don't think there's going to be that much change, to be honest with you, between the proposed changes to the 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 low density. As to are they going to move forward with this development? I think you're going to have to talk to and ask the applicant on that. But what we would be doing through this process is enabling them to move forward.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Erickson, are you with us yet?
I don't see him on my screen at all right now.
I don't see him either. And you know what? Counsel McKay, we'll want, are you okay if we go to the applicant and the public and then we can come back to administration?
And you come back?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Don't let me forget.
I I don't want to. I don't want to.
All right, because I don't see any more questions. Why? I actually have one. It was mentioned in the backgrounder that some at, you know, we could require some what what you called site density bonusing measure measures. And you gave examples of, you know, a percentage of underground parking, landscaping or additional common common amenity areas. If council was to approve the proposals from the applicant, could we still put in some of those site density bonusing measures?
I don't know that the development officers would be able to increase.
All right, we can. And we're having such a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I don't know that the development officers would be able to increase the density any further from what council may approve by this application. But for a high density site, I think those things like underground parking and amenity sites would still be under the purview of the development officers. Adrian may be able to clarify.
Okay.
I don't think, so the way the district is written, the original district, the R four, that's some of the things that we could that that's how we usually get the extra ten meters is we say, okay, are you going to provide extra amenity site? Then what the original bylaw has provided. But the way this is written, it's you wouldn't necess, they just get the density. They don't have to provide that extra. If that is something that you wanted, then I would suggest we're going to have to have a bit of a chat with ledge services to figure out how to get that written on the fly.
Okay, thanks. And then just some general comments or questions. When I went through the area structure plan and the red line version, uh, you, there's a lot of changes to the ASP that are proposed. Some of them completely inconsequential to the applicant's proposed changes. Where am I going here? So for example, you added a bunch of verbiage on page seventy five, whoops.
There are some sections that we
Yeah, so there was so
modernized ones to keep this this is an older ASP, so we've just added some sections that
Yes.
If it's going to be amended, keep it in line with some of our more up to date documents.
So under one point two authority of the plan, there is a whole bunch of additional language and some bullet points and one that just sparked my curiosity was that the city reserves the right to apply any additional infrastructure servicing specifications to the lands covered by this ASP in order to provide quality service to the citizens. That seems To the lands covered by this ASP in order to provide quality service to the citizens. That seems pretty. Arbitrary to put into an air, area structure plan. Um. Is this? Standard in all area structure plans now?
In the newer ones, I believe we took this out of the Sherone. Very structured plan.
It's, yeah, it's section one point two authority of the plan. It's all new.
Yep, so those were carried from our, some of our more recent air structure plans and updated one.
So that's kind of a standard thing now?
Definitely.
Um, and then a couple pages later. You. Objectives of the plan, you removed um. It used to say establish a land use plan that creates an urban village environment. And you've totally removed that and you said just with higher density. Do you not see this as an urban village environment anymore? No, based upon the way the development has um built out over the past years. It doesn't generally meet the requirements of an urban village. Um, it's not to say that there aren't components of an urban village within it, but urban visual villages are generally. Um. Walkable and um a little bit more connected in the way this one has grown out. Um, they're very singular in their land uses on every single parcel. There's no mixed use buildings. There's no mixed use areas. Um, and again, it is very um. Auto focused, it's, it's not real, it's auto reliant. So that's why it's been removed. Is all the commercial built out in Villas Gru now? No, there is another commercial parcel to the north of. Where the high density site is located. Um, and. Okay, cause then you removed a comment that called storefronts uh to street face with parking ID behind it as a strong. Pedestrian orientation. I, I like that wording in there. Just why did you take it out? Um, because that's not the way it's developing out. It's um now a C, they're, they're going with more traditional zoning. Or have gone with more traditional zoning in this area and it does, it's difficult for us to require that, so. Um, not to say that someone couldn't put that in there, but we can't hold them to it. Okay, yeah, when I think of the commercial there, it, it is not. Parking behind the buildings and street oriented, so. It was in there before and it didn't really. Right. Develop that way, so. Because, because the land use bylaw was amended. Um, there was a different district identified for this, for these lands. But over the years, it has changed. The land use district has changed from mixed use. Um. Uh, Villas Gru, I think, I, I can't remember the exact nomenclature for it, but. Um, it was a special district that was designed for there and it's never been applied. And the development has occurred and amendments have happened by previous councils to change it. Okay, so one last question. Um. Christina, just generally, like, some of the changes I feel in the area structure plan are good, that, that, cause it does align it more with flourish. Is that something we not, even if this proposal fails today? Some of the other changes you've made are strong, so is it something that we would want to introduce? Um, we could, it's probably going to be a bit messy to break out all of the red lines. But one of the um, and a direction from council could be that we update the Villas Gru to. More accurately represent. Um. The current. Uh. The current realities and, and the current standards that we have and keep it in aligned with flourish. That could be a, a separate motion at. Yeah, and then we would come back at another, at a later date with the, those amendments, yes. Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Fletcher.
Good morning, my, um, I saw Mr. Erickson pop up. If you're okay, we can do a quick check of his audio and he could answer questions at rest.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you and apologies for the, the technical issue there.
So, um, I'll get Counsel Mackay to repeat his question.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think I.
He forgot, probably.
No, I did not. Uh, I, I think you probably got the gist of it though, so unless you need me to clarify anything in particular, Mr. Erickson or.
May, maybe just a, a question of clarification, looking sort of for a, a broader statement, or was there, there's something specific? Um, within the report that you want, wanted more detail on.
No, I'm referring to the, when this was. Went through your department, uh, looking for internal comments, you identified a, a, a large number of bullets. In relation uh to what I can only. Term benefits and uh, certainly uh, promise for our community and I just. You know, for the benefit of anybody who may be listening and just for the record, if you could identify them would be uh, would be what I'm looking for.
Sure, thank you, counselor. Um, I mean, I get, maybe I would start off by just saying that, you know, these types of applications are, are, are complex and, and with any. New development, there's, there's certainly pros and cons and, and many considerations for, for administration to look at. I, I think when. Um, you know, our, our department was asked to sort of weigh in and provide some, some comments. Um, we certainly looked at it through an economic lens and I think that. Um, wow, we, we see some alignment with this development and perhaps some benefits to uh, our Lakeview Business District. Um, we see it potentially being a, a competitive advantage for that district and for. Uh, you know, potentially the benefit of future employers and businesses in that area. Uh, and this is largely because availability of labor is becoming a really important issue for, for businesses. It's becoming a. An increasing challenge and, and a key decision in, or a key factor, I could say, in location decisions, so. Uh, establishing an area within St. Albert, um, you know, that, that would be in close proximity to a diverse mix of, of housing product. I think can be advantageous from an investment or a commercial investment attraction perspective, and I, I think about this as an example of. You know, residents within uh Villas Gru, residents within Riverside and Sherone. Um, you know, just being essentially across the street to a future employment area, there's certainly a benefit to that, that employment area from, from that perspective. Um, we talked a little bit about. A project like this having the potential and, and, and again, being sort of speculative. We've talked about that a little bit. I think when we're looking forward, we have to be a little bit. Um, but it may be a signal of, of investor or market confidence. Uh, if you have a development group that is interested in. Uh, perhaps a, a bit of a more bold concept. Uh, it could potentially send a message to other, other developers, other investors. That um, this is a community that's, that's welcoming of, of this type of, of, of. Project. Um, I think the other part that we, we think about, you know, in, in sort of the larger economy is um, sort of that, that um. Housing stock and, and housing diversity. Um, certainly there's, there's a challenge right now. We're seeing a lot of. Um, net migration into the province, and so we're seeing some challenges when it comes to availability of, of housing. So just ensuring that we've got a, a broad mix of, of housing product within the city, I think is important for our, our overall economy. And then just in terms of the. Um. The, the density, there's, there's, there's sort of an, an investment um, sort of per acre and assessment per acre. Factor that we were sort of looking at and, and just from an efficient sort of land use and investment perspective, uh, the densities being proposed within here. Um, you know, uh, could potentially provide, you know, high, high density uh, assessment or high density from an investment perspective.
Thank you. I, I think that's sufficient. I appreciate your feedback. For a while there, I'm thinking that you were the politician and that I was. But good job. Thank you. I appreciate the uh, feedback.
All right. I see no more hands up. Excuse me, um, I'm gonna go. To the applicant now. So we've got a few, so I see Bladen, of course, here. Let me just make sure I've got my list here. Public hearing eighteen, yes. So we have Sidex here. Are you, are you making a presentation? Yes, are, are you doing it, Bladen, or is everyone doing it? Go ahead. Yeah. And you guys have ten minutes to speak, so.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, we're excited to be here today uh, to present this uh, exciting development to you. Um, lots of questions already on the floor, so try and go through the presentation quickly. Um, but just wanted to go over the original vision uh, for Villas Gru in, in the ASP. Um, some of the objectives directly from the ASP are establish a land use plan that creates an urban village environment. Develop a distinct urban forum with clearly defined edges and a central focal point. This amendment helps with that central focal point here, as you'll see. Create a place where the needs of daily life are met within a convenient four hundred meter walking distance. Um. We'll go through the, the, uh, the full amendment, but. Just wanted to reiterate that these are in the approved plan and, and we continue to uh, abide by these objectives. Uh, provide a range of housing options that are predominantly medium to higher density residential. Which may include mid-rise and high-rise apartments. Uh, so that's an important one and form a self-contained integrated community with a mix of complimentary land uses and activities. So I think with the existing commercial that's already there, the existing park. Uh, four-story apartment buildings, it's already building out to be that self-contained urban village type of uh, development. Uh, Mr. Itani has, has followed through with the original vision and objectives of the ASP with what's been built to date. And the proposed plan amendment updates the ASP to adjust to today's realities and continue with those same approved obje- objectives. Um, the, the general focus of the uh, Villas Gru is diversity of housing. Um, so this, this proposed amendment introduces a higher density. Um, there's already some four stories. There's an approved eight-story um, development, which you can see. Uh, sort of the, the shorter, wider uh, building on here. Um, so that's what you can currently build under the R, uh, the R four district. Um. So this, this uh, amendment to the R four allows for the higher taller and skinnier buildings, which we'll talk about some of those uh. Uh, benefits later and. You know, in the city report, it did uh, also talk about um, economic development, talked about the vacancy rate for rental housing. How it's dropped from seven point three percent in twenty twenty-one to only two point two percent uh, vacancy rate in twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's with all these buildings coming on. These are, I think, fully rented uh, buildings right now. Um, so St. Albert's in need of this uh, rental. The whole neighborhood is, is planned as rental, so the diversity of housing, there's low density. Medium density, high density, all of it would be rental. Um, just, this is just a comparison of the, the plan. So the approved plan is on the left. Proposed plan is on the right. Uh, you can see on the uh, on the right that we've uh. Increased the amount of low density, but also since the first plan was approved, we're allowed to have. Townhouse within that low density uh, land use. Lanes have allowed for the townhouse um, as well as smaller building forms. Um, so, so although the low density land use is increased, the actual density of that, that low density could be increased as well. Um. The park site has been consolidated, so there was two pocket parks that are separated by roads there. Um, we've put them together on, on the north and connected with the uh, greenway to the, to the north to Giroux Road. Um, to the south, there's a, also a greenway that goes down to a trail system that uh, wraps around the R four site. Um. This, we, we had a public open house back in October, so it's been a long time. Um, long time waiting to get the council here, but uh, one of the comments from that public open house was. Could we add a connection out to uh, Reggibben Drive? So we looked at it, found a way. In the original plan, there was no connection out. There was this greenway that sort of connected east but not west. And so that was great idea, uh, and we added that connection out to, to complete the, the trail network, which actually goes back to downtown. It's a, it's a major trail that, what, network for uh, city of St. Albert. Um. Go to the next slide here. Uh, all this area that's uh, under the hatch, that's approved. So all this development is approved and subdivided. Um. The site next door, that's the eight stories. That, that already has a development permit in place and approved and is just working on uh, getting under construction. So we've talked about pedestrian and, and bike connectivity, the parks, um. You can. The uh, we go back to this one, you can see that the medium density sites, we've just consolidated those into where we've put the high density site. So that's allowed for the better uh, configuration of roads and better connectivity of roads uh, to get around there. Um. The other, I, I actually, we did have one other comment at the open house by one uh, one person who, who wanted uh, to talk about parking. They were concerned there would be parking, too much parking on the street. Uh, we were originally proposing a reduction to the parking. Numbers uh, for the apartment site uh, in the R four district and after that meeting, we decided to. Uh, Mr. Itani decided to, to remove that uh, and just go with what's in the current bylaw. This is the site here, uh, central, so it's, it's located centrally in the neighborhood. You can see the two towers are on the north end of the site. Which leaves a lot of open space. Um, next door is the eight-story building and you can see how it's wide, takes up the whole width of the site. Here you've got a better streetscape where you can see a, a view between the two sites. It's not as imposing uh, for somebody walking by. Uh, there's also the podium, two-story podium on the, on the bottom of the building, which um. You know, i- is more to scale with pedestrians and cars going by. Um, parking would be in accordance with the bylaw, mostly under, under, underground with visitor on top. Uh, and then again, lots of open space. So, want to talk about why, uh, why go up and. As we showed in that first slide, the, the eight stories to get density on there, you need to go wide, so it ends up with long corridors. Long hallways internal from getting to the elevator to your unit. Those can be, you know, sometimes dimly lit, not that it would be in this case, but. Um. But when you go with a tower, it's much more efficient. This, you can use much more of your space as livable space rather than common hallway space. Um, or with multiple uh, elevators and multiple stairwells. So everything's contained, so you come up out of your car, go up the elevator, right at your uh. Come out right at your unit there and take your groceries in. You don't have to walk a long way and, and drag things down long quarters. Obviously, the, another big advantage is better views. So looking out to Big Lake or in any direction, you can see long way. Uh, very attractive views out from your patio or, or your balcony. Um. And, and then also with more efficiency and more rentable space. That's more cost effective for the developer, which gets passed on to the renters, so it's more bang for your buck for a renter. Um. As was discussed, this is an ideal location next to Lakeview Business District. It's near the key transportation routes of Reggibben Drive and uh, Giroux Road. Um, it's right on the trail network, that main trail network which runs all the way to downtown. Uh, and will connect out to Reggibben Drive and. Uh, out to Carrot Creek eventually, so um. This is a, an ideal uh, location for uh, active transportation modes. Um, all sorts of transportation modes with transit there as well. Um. And, and getting right out onto Reggibben drove as, drive as a, a major transportation route. Um. It's also no, locate close by the, the future community uh, campus, the recreation campus to the north. Um, and quick easy access to Big Lake. So there's been a lot of discussion about the MDP. Uh, we sort of differ in our opinion on, on. Whether it, it um, complies with the current MDP flourish. This ASP has been, was approved as it was mentioned back in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. Um, so it was approved before flourish was written, and so why doesn't it comply? It still complies with the goals that were in the original Villas Gru ASP. Um, the MDP speaks to minimums, not to maximum densities. Uh, there is a, you know. It, it speaks a lot to intentions rather than what's clearly written into policies. Um. And, and I'll reiterate that ASP objective of. Uh, providing a range of housing options that predominantly medium to higher density residential, which may include mid-rise and high-rise apartments, so. Still comply with that. Um. So the, the other thing uh, about this is it, it complies with EMRB uh, goals of, of density. Um, and diversity and efficiency, so really trying to get that diverse housing product in here, really trying to get more rentals in here, which is uh. You know, a goal uh, coun- countrywide, not just for St. Albert, not just for Edmonton, but. The country, you know, Canada is, uh, government of Canada is providing subsidies and incentives to get more rental housing into areas and. Uh, there's a reason for that, and this is a great opportunity for that. You know, St. Albert Trail would be. You know, if there was opportunities on St. Albert Trail, they would be developing. Right now, this area has amenity. It's been fully planned as a complete community and some of those amenities, we just talked. Going over time, but we can talk more about amenities if you'd like, but. Kayaks, canoes, pickleball, all concierge services and lots of parks, indoor pickleball, lots of uh. Lots of uh, amenities for a complete community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure there's gonna be a few questions and already Counsel Veremansky's got her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you and thank you for pres- uh, presenting today. I was that counselor that did, uh, you know, view your public hearing and everything and I mean. Uh, there was a lot of good ideas there, having the, you know, neighborhood uh, rental. uh there was a lot of good ideas there having the, you know, neighborhood rental and choice of rental spaces within that neighborhood, the few questions I have for you is is why um you know, the four to eight, well, eight-story, I guess, is what you're saying, have the approval, like, why jump all the way up to over twenty? You know, it it's not a small adjustment, it's it's a dramatic adjustment, so why not a little bit lesser ask when you were coming forward with that?
Well, I think uh twenty, you know, in the region, twenty isn't that high, if for Saint Albert, it's definitely a change, right? But um it it gives you that that skinnier building form, that that you get the density on site in a skinnier, slimmer um you know, less impactful uh building, it's a- and in this case, we're up against the C N rail, there's two, there's walkways on on two of the sides and a road on the north. Uh and there's a transition of height, so it goes from four to eight to twenty, or sixteen to twenty, you know, it's that's that's the maximum. Uh there were discussions with the men about reducing it, it wasn't gonna change their minds about whether they supported this or not. Um but the offer was on the table there.
Okay, and you're saying twenty is common out there now, is that what you just said, sorry?
Uh yeah, yeah, definitely, I mean, definitely in Edmonton, uh much more than twenty, uh as we've seen. Um you know, Windermere, there there's uh there's towers out there which are considered suburban, towers right in the neighborhood that that help to support that commercial. Yeah, it it's a, this is a little bit transformational for for what could be in Saint Albert, right, and it does uh bring that density to help with the uh local commercial um and the Lakeview Business District that's coming as well.
Okay, and then the other question is, um in those neighborhoods, I'm I'm not sure if you were builders in the other areas of the of towers that high, but was there traditionally pushback from the neighborhood when, you know, they were expecting their their plan currently allowed for like eight stories and then all of a sudden, you know, um approval and twenty stories behind us kind of thing, that's, you know, that's a big change for a neighborhood that's growing as predominantly residential, so just what kind of feedback have you received previously? Yes, sure.
So on the present eight-story approved building, we could have gone to
Can you just get closer to the mic?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
In the present eight-story uh building that's approved, that's uh gonna go under construction shortly, it could have been gone to eleven-story because the we, the development officer has the authority to go up to thirty-five sto- thirty-five meters and it's in the zoning and uh which could, we could have done that building at eleven stories, not eight stories. The reason, the reason uh we need to go vertically higher is to build better quality of 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 uh living spaces. As as Lathan mentioned, when you build bulkier, shorter building, your efficiency of living space to buildable space is low. Just to give you an example, on the eight-story approved building next door, our efficiency adds at seventy-five percent. So it means every square feet we built, we only use seventy-five percent of it in living or rentable space, regardless if it's for sale or for rent, it doesn't make a difference. So the consumer, the homeowners is gonna pay for that twenty-five percent because that's it's it's being built. When you go on a smaller floor plate, your efficiency goes on a twenty-story building, we can go up to eighty-eight percent in efficiency. And this is the reason we're we're suggesting to go twenty stories. Because if we build them shorter, we have to build them bigger, means lo- lo- the floor plate is larger, means the efficiency is reduced. So twenty stories is kind of the breaking point where you can get to the optimal uh efficiency, which gives the the homeowner a better living space at ma- at a much better cost and also a a more livel- livable uh living space, because it's very important for people when they live in condominiums, it re- it doesn't matter if it's four, six, eight, twenty-story or thirty-stories, to live in a comfortable space where they feel it's airy, it's light, and the the higher you go, the better area and lighter space you're gonna get. And on top of that, if you looked at the site plan, it opens up the ground floor where we have more green space on the on the ground floor level compared to the building that's already approved next door, which is mostly cover the whole site, the majority of the whole site. So it's very important, so your question about other communities, indeed, we we have other communities, uh we we have a similar site uh and and it's not in Saint Albert, but I'm gonna give the example in Calgary. And uh we, it was approved the same zoning, you know, and we went in, we we started the community in two phases in low-rises, four and six-story buildings. So we we found out that people want something more elevated, nicer, more efficiency, more cost-effective. So we just decided to go and do two towers, one eighteen-story and one twenty-story, which again, it needed an amendment, and we got full approval of the amendment by the Community Association and by administration and by uh city council. Uh so the the trend is towards working with better living space, more efficient living space from a cost perspective and more airy living space. So the intention is not, it's not just about the height, it's about what's best for the people. And I I want you to look at this not just as a specific site, because as 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 you know, we we own all of Villarou. And we develop except the commercial piece to the north, we don't own that, otherwise we would have triggered it already, it's owned by the original owners, which is uh the the sobeys, grocery store. We, on the building next door that's approved, that's gonna go under construction shortly, we are investing at least eight million dollars in building a private amenity space for the Villarou residents, not just for that building that's next door. So it's very important, we have, we are building amenities on addition to the amenities that are supplied by the municipality, which is the two parks and eventually a third park here. So it's a full- fully comprehensive community, we we would like people to live in three generation in this community. We'd like the same family to live, the your grandparents, the parents and the grandchildren. Because we believe in social interaction and we believe in building ties in communities, we don't people, we don't want people to keep moving. Like, you know, if if it comes to a point where grandpa and grandma wanna live in a nice condo, they're gonna say, we have no choice, we have to go to Edmonton, your kids stays in Saint Albert or we're gonna go to Edmonton, we don't want that. We want a a fully comprehensive social uh bond together in this community, we have lots of residents that live in the four-story wood frame, they're waiting for this to happen, they'd like to move here because they're seniors, they, you know, they'd like to live in area, bigger, taller structure. So the twenty-story, I know it's a big change for your city and I respect that. But in in our business, twenty-story is a mid-rise, uh and and yes, you call it a high-rise, it's a mid-rise, like we we just went to city council in Calgary, we had a site zoned for twenty-seven story and we took it to forty-five story and city council unanimously approved it and applauded us. So time are changing and I think every municipality need to look at changes that's good for them. And I know that this is not a typical loc- location, this is a very unique location where it's bonding a future employment center. Okay, and it has restriction which is Ray Gibbon and the railway track, so it has no impact on residential. It has an impact only on the surrounding area which we own and we're gonna develop. And one of your councilmen had a question about what's the risk if we're gonna build the high-rise or the or the low-density, I can answer that question before it's it's passed to me, we've already proven that we're building the mo- the 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 higher density, we oh we only started with a four-story wood frame. We we could have built, we have a site on the on the east side, that's a townhome site, which is lower density, we didn't do that. So our intention is to build the density, you know, well, so I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, and uh it was mentioned at your presentation as well, what you've just mentioned now that, you know, uh citizens would live in that area for life, so to speak, or rent from you for life. And um do you not see like a a transient uh population, you know, like renting as well that amongst the people that would stay there a period of time as well?
That's a good question. So we've done lots of studies, like, let me tell you about our background. We've been in development, my family's been in development for a hundred and twenty years, I've been in development in in Alberta for forty-one years. I was a merchant developer, which means I was a developer that used to build product and sell it and didn't look back at how the community ended up twenty, thirty years from now. You know, in the last twelve years, there's been a major change in the Canadian housing market, which you probably haven't seen yet, but it's coming and it's already started to come. There's lots of people are actually exiting the ownership market and entering the the leasing market, it's the same thing as like, for example, in car business. Fifteen years ago, people used to buy cars, today, what do they do? Seventy-one percent of car sales in the in North America are leased. So the the market is shifting towards non-ownership, freedom of ho- ho- homeownership, they want somebody else to take care of them and to take care of these properties professionally. You know, so our our business focus has changed in two thousand and eleven from being a merchant developer to becoming what we call generational asset developer, it means everything we wanna build, we wanna maintain with pride to the highest quality. And this model of building generational asset, you have to allow your your future residents to have a choice. I can't just say to them, come and live only in this four-story building or six-story wood frame, they want other things, they want amenities, they want services, they want social ge- inter- interconnectivity. They want a a mix of different products, so if 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 I were to live there and if I have children that are married, young couples, they may not wanna live in a condo, they wanna live in a townhouse. But eventually, the grandchildren may wanna live in a condo because that's what, you know, wood frame condo, which that's what that's what they can afford, so we're building social network and we're building social ties to the families to stay together rather than going away from each other. So if you look at our residents, present residents in Villarou today, like some of these buildings are now four, four years old, some are three years old, very few turnovers. It means people are anchored and happy where they are. And most of our residents that comes in here, they've sold their homes in Saint Albert. They stayed in Saint Albert, but they say, well, there's no room for my kids, my kids wanna live in a a house and my grandkids wanna live in a townhouse. So we're saying, it's coming, we're gonna develop this whole community as a fully comprehensive community. Yeah, we're not looking for the height for, we're looking for the height for better quality of living, the other thing that's very important, we're becoming more energy-efficient and more green-thinking mind. When you keep building in wood construction, you're logging more lo- more more lumber, you're killing more trees. When you're building vertically, there's no wood in that construction and it's more energy-efficient, when you live in a building like this, you can build to the the highest lead standard, which is the highest green built. Where if you're building a wood frame structure or a townhome or a house, you cannot build a house to a lead, nobody's building houses to lead standard, maybe one per million. You know, most of our buildings are lead-certified. So it means you're getting a better energy-efficient, a better quality of living, and as your fire chief mentioned, all these buildings are highly pressurized with sprinkler system. So if for any reason a fire happens, it's very easy to 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 fight a fire in a high-rise rather than fight a fire in a townhome wood frame structure, that's vinyl siding. You know, the other thing that's very important that's reflected, because these are higher energy and higher quality of construction, the insurance on these buildings is a third of the insurance on a wood structure. So if I was to build a six-story wood structure, which lots of the developers are building, next on this side, the insurance on a building, let's say three hundred unit, will be probably five hundred thousand dollar a year. The insurance on the same product on the tower is a hundred thousand dollar a year. So that four hundred thousand dollar a year in saving will go towards the tenants because it reduces their cost of living. So this is very important to know all of these factors, just rather than just focusing, what is it, twenty-story or nineteen or eighteen or twenty-one, trust me. I had the same situation in Calgary years ago. I had a a I had to go to the council where I had to amend the uh the height for for the site. And the development uh the authorities fought me to restrict the height to thirty-story. And I tell, I told the thirties at that time, don't limit me to height, limit me to density at that time. So the guy said, no, we wanna limit you to height, anyway, and the buildings were built and I live in one of them. And the other day, the the gentleman that was development officer, he became actually the uh uh council secretary, he run into me at council, he said, I made a mistake, we should have limited you because when I drive on, let's see, if you drive on Ray Gibbon, if this building is sixteen, eighteen, twenty-story, you will never know the difference. It has no impact on any neighboring, to the south of the railway, to the east is our property, which is the eight-story, to the west is our property, where we're gonna build the single family of the townhouses.
Okay, thank you, and another question I have, the um the demographic for the, you know, the twentieth floor, so to speak, what's what what are you seeing out there?
Typically, in a in a in a in a vertical building like this, I would say the majority of the tenants or the owners or the residents are gonna be middle-aged to uh I would say semi-retired people. This is why it's a big, it's a big advantage for this, once you're, what you're trying to propose with your uh employment center to the west of this. You know, if you're trying to attract high-tech company, if you're trying to attract some high-quality industrial production, some of these executives don't wanna live in houses, I'm one of them, I don't live in a house, I used to, I lived I'm sixty-three years old, I lived in a house till I was fifty-five. Then I would never move back into a house, I'm very happy in my condo. So some of these people that gonna come and work in this, they were gonna say, where we're gonna live, south, we're gonna live in North Edmonton, West Edmonton? And why would we move our businesses here if we can't live here? And some of these are executives, they make the decision to move this company to that location or not. So we have existing tenants in Villarou today, they are waiting to move into this building. You know, they would be very happy. You know, I didn't think about it that you need letter of support, I could have wrote you fifty, a hundred letter of supports if I if I knew you want some because they would be very happy, I was on site this morning and one of them came to me, I I won't mention his name, and he said, when is that gonna start, I said, we have to ask city council if they approve it.
Okay, and one last question, it might be a silly one, but um how long does it take the elevator from the main floor to the top? Because I lived on, I lived on the twenty-third floor in an apartment building one time, and that was the most frustrating thing about living in that building. And there was a fire in that building and so that, you know, it's the elevators and the that panic factor, so.
Yeah, so there's two things in the in the, when we design these buildings, there's two things, we do a, we do a a traffic study and we put the highest quality of elevator on our building, so there's two factors, the number of elevators in the building, because we have, we always, if there's a fire, there's one that fire that fought the the fireman will come and lock it and use the one. So we typically put on towers like this uh three elevators, if you look at the floor plan, if if I can, can you, can you magnify this? So look at that brown middle piece. No, just go back. Not the same, the same side, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so just put the arrow in the middle of the column. You see, there's three sets of elevator on the other side, yeah, where the arrow is, okay? A twenty-story, a twenty-story building requires only two elevators.
Okay.
But we put three, and then on top of that, we use the highest speed elevator available in the market because we want to get it to the tenants or to the resident as fast as possible. So it takes probably from uh the ground floor to twentieth floor, I would say between fourteen to fifteen seconds.
Okay, and I think that is um that's it.
Okay, there's a few one, I can come back, yeah, uh I've got Council brought in, Council Jolly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just one question for you, uh so uh one of the promises, I guess, the of of this whole development, when it was first put together, was that it would be a um a a development where it was walkable, meaning that there was uh commercial uh sites available, and you say you don't own the uh property of the north, it's still uh owned by Sobes. Have you had any discussion, uh does this density then bring this online, how does that play out?
Sure, so I had several meeting with the Sobe group, including their V P Development. And their first answer is that we want density and we want the rooftop to be completed before we commit, and that goes back before I even bought the site from Genstar. Uh because they were, I don't know if you know the history, but they were the real owner of that subdivision, Genstar were their development met partner. And uh so they, I was trying to buy the whole site, they wouldn't sell the commercial site because they wanna build the grocery store and own it. And uh I went all the way to Toronto, met their senior VP three times. And her, her comment is that you go and build the density. And that's why they would be very supportive of this density that would allow them to trigger the construction of their uh grocery store.
This, uh, an unfair question, man. I'm going to throw it out there. You don't have to answer, but have they made a commitment that if you build it, they'll come?
Well, that, that's what they told me. I I I only have to, I I I convey what they told me. I, if they don't, I I'll be very happy to buy their site and build a store. But I I I I'll put this offer in front of you. If you can tell them to send me the site, I'll buy it.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for that comment. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Council Jolly.
Thank you. So my question is just about, you made the comment about really twenty stories being that breaking point for efficiency and cost effectiveness um for both the builder and the renter. So it kind of, is it your perspective that that would be the case in any location in Saint Albert?
Yeah, uh, you can go lower, you can go lower, but when you go lower and with the same density, you have to make that floor plate bigger. Okay, so this floor plate, let's say, for example, I think this floor plate is around nine hundred square meter, if I'm not mistaken, give or take around that. So if I go a floor lower, it means I'm losing five percent of the total density. I have to make the floor plate five percent larger, but it's not going to help me because the the five percent would go mostly in the corridors, you know?
So really, kind of that twenty stories is the minimum kind of that you're looking for, and that would be for any developer across Saint Albert, probably.
The twenty story is to get to that eighty-eight percent efficiency.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, we still have Council Killick.
Uh, thank you. You had mentioned, or Bladen had mentioned a comment around um originally relaxing the parking requirements, but that's been um since changed and you're now uh meeting that the minimum parking requirements.
Correct.
I, I think that's great. Um, but I I don't see parking, I don't see that commented in our, in our background. Or was that something that just came up um late or?
Sorry, the the change to the amendment uh to remove parking? No, that came up after the open house, uh, the public open house. Um, there was a comment from a resident concerned with that. Um, I mean, I know with the zoning bylaw, the overall zoning bylaw, the city will be considering parking um numbers and and what's appropriate for developments in today's uh today's world, I guess, but um we didn't see it as necessary to to amend uh the parking for this site um specifically, go with whatever the.
You, you can answer, or administration can answer. I, what, what is the actual, like, one point two six or something like that for?
It's based on number of bedrooms per unit. So two per three bedroom, one point five for a two-bedroom, and I think one for a one-bedroom, if I'm right.
Yeah, so there, you're, you're going to meet the standard uh parking requirements as they are set out today, then.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Uh, Council Hughes.
Thank you. So you are, you're fine to have both the towers typically rentals, is that correct?
Yes, the, the whole community of Villarou, uh, as I said, we're building a fully comprehensive rental community.
Um, so what is the price point you're looking at for the rental costs?
What's the?
What are you planning to rent them at?
Well, we don't have that yet. We don't know when we're, like, you have to get the land use approved, then you have to do the DP, then you have to do the construction. I cannot predict what construction cost is going to be two or three years from now. But trust me, when I have a seventy-five percent efficiency building to eighty-eight percent efficiency building, that's a twenty percent saving in the efficiency, which means it's going to be reflected in the twenty percent of the rental rates. So if I built the same building in an eight-story format, I'm going to be looking for twenty percent more rent.
So the eight-story, what are you renting that at?
Well, we haven't stopped construction. It'll be, it'll be very competitive to what we presently have in in Solis and in Juvinjuru estate.
So what are those rents at?
Uh, so we have units there from uh twelve hundred to, I think, around nineteen hundred a month, depending if they're one or two or three.
Okay, so what I'm trying to figure out though is, like, the thing with rent is it's not always dependent upon what the purchase price is. It's just a little bit bearing on what the rental market is. So I understand that if you built to twenty, it would cost you less as the owner. But to say that that savings we passed on to the renters isn't typically what happens when you look at a rental market. So um I'm trying to figure out, so you have an eight-story that you're saying is not workable to do in a tower format. You can't do eight stories in a small tower, in the to, in the narrow tower format. You keep talking about narrow tower has to be twenty.
Correct.
Why can't the narrow tower be eight?
Yeah, so, so nar- narrow towers, uh, the narrow towers have an efficiency. It means efficiency means how much space of what you built is sellable or rentable. So if I'm building a hundred thousand feet tower, just to give you a simple example, in a tower on a twenty-story, I have eighty-eight thousand square feet of rentable or sellable. If I'm building a hundred thousand square feet in an eight-story building, I have seventy-five thousand square feet of rentable or or sellable. So it means all my costs to build a hundred thousand feet has to be recovered from seventy-five thousand instead of eighty-eight. So there's a, almost a twenty percent difference s- saving between the seventy-five and eighty-eight percent.
So I understand the efficiency. I just don't know why you can't cap it at eight stories. You can build an efficient building and just cap it at eight.
No, you cannot build an eight.
You can't.
Because we go to those, we have the eight-story next door.
Right.
We, we, we have it and we're going to start it pretty soon. And we've done the math. It's at seventy-five percent efficiency, because that's like, if you go in an eight-story, the corridor is in the center. You take the elevator, then you walk to the other end of the building, which is a hundred and twenty-five feet. So all that corridor is a waste. And you go the other way, a hundred and twenty-five feet, it's also a waste. So, and then, just another thing, just put that picture for me with that, other things. When your fireman would, your fire chief would know. So when you're building an eight-story building, you have to have fire exit stairs. Every building has to have a fire exit stairs. On a, on a longer building, the stairs, there, there could be three sets of stairs that you need. One by your elevators, one on the far end of the building, the other one on the third far end of the building. So we're building three staircase. On this, on the tower, we built one set of stairs. We call it the scissors stairs. Because the stairs sits on top of each other. And if you look, if you focus, can you put the arrow here? Yeah. If you, if you look at the cross from the elevator, this is what I call the scissors stairs. There's a single opening of one staircase, but it fits two. One on the downside, one on the upside. This is why towers are more efficient. So I'm not losing three sets staircase. I'm only putting one set of staircase, which is a saving for the resident. It's a saving for whoever's going to buy that condo or rent that condo, regardless if it's ownership or rental, regardless.
Okay, I, I, I know that rentals aren't directly related to whether or not the developer gets to save money building. But, so I still, I'm going to go back and ask this one question again, because I, you keep coming back as if it's eight stories must be wide. Why can't the eight stories still be in the narrow footprint?
Because if you build an eight-story narrow, you will never get the density. So if you have a site that's zoned for two hundred thousand feet and you want to build half of it, you're building only a hundred thousand feet.
Right, so you're indicating like two hundred units per hectare somehow a necessary density. Whereas we have functioned many times before without two hundred units per hectare. So I, if you don't have, why do you need two hundred units per hectare? Like, that's, what's what it comes down to, because you're asking for a dramatic increase in the density. And um, don't tell me that there's going to be cost savings to residents, because you can't even tell what you think the pricing is going to be. So that's all speculative.
Correct.
But I'm trying to figure out why you can't just build a narrow tower that goes eight stories up. And yes, you'll have fewer units in it.
Correct.
But it's also still possible to build that. You're trying to figure out why that isn't actually an option, because that would be what administration would have suggested, supported.
So I presently have an eight-story building approved next door.
And that's a wide footprint. What if you did not do a wide?
Yeah, it means I'm going to build half of it. If I built half of the building, I will not build it because technically you're not using the zoning. The zoning allows you for that. You're saying to me, our zoning allow you, go and build half the zoning. So if somebody, if somebody buys a townhome site, and you said this townhome site can, this site can fit a hundred townhomes, but you go and tell the developer, go and build only fifty, then the cost is going to be higher. Because the, the, the cost of the land never changed. So you're, you're saying, take the cost of land and split it into half and add it to the cost of your buildings.
Okay. It's just, you initially were saying you could build these at a much lower density. And you're, you're basically saying each complex must have X number of units, is what you're telling me, whether you do it wide or tall. You want to have X number of units per unit, per building.
Whatever I'm saying, what I'm saying, I want the better quality of living for the resident in this area. I already have the four-story. I already have the eight-story. I already have the townhome site. I will have the single-family homes. And I'll have the semi-detached. So what's missing in this whole community is the vertical element that's going to give them a better quality of condominium of living space to live in.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Council Jolly, see your hand back up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just back to the question about the Sobeys land there. I understand that Sobeys also has a piece of land in kind of North Edmonton that they've owned for about a decade. And they've put restrictive covenants on the, the other lands in the area that say that, um, you know, the, the developer can't build grocery stores and flower shops and whatnot. Do those still same restrictive covenants exist on your commercial lands?
No, my commercial land is already built. And it's, it's, commercial land is where the gas station is, the C store. I already have the services there. I have the medical, I have the hairdresser, the daycare, the
Restaurant.
The shop, that's, it's called the, the shops at Villarou.
So there's no, there's no restrictions on that on your commercial space?
I couldn't build a grocery store, it's not big enough. But there's no restriction, no.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, I see no more hands up. Wes, you're good. I see no more people here indicating they want to ask questions. So um I had no questions, uh, except for when you had mentioned that you had considered reducing the parking. I was intrigued. Um, City of Edmonton no longer requires minimums or maximums, I'm sure. I can't remember what they do. Calgary's moving that direction.
Yes.
What do you see as the ideal number of parking stops per unit?
Can I share a story with you? There's about your answer. I was the first developer in Calgary's history to build a tower downtown with zero parking.
I was going to mention that.
But I don't want to bring this up here, because that's not my plan to do in Saint Albert.
Yeah.
So, so what I was, what I took that, I believe in reducing parking in the future, because that's the trend. People are going to be less driving and sharing drive. And what we're trying to do, we're trying to get people to interact within the community and share rights. This is why when you have three generations of the same family, maybe the kids or the grandkids can take grandpa and grandpa to the doctor rather than grandpa and grandma driving to the doctor or to the, to the hospital. Or then grandpa and grandma maybe can take the kids to the school, you know, and pick them up from school rather than mom and dad doing that. So uh, as a person, I believe the requirement for parking in the future is going to get reduced. Because we're going to become more environmentally aware of less driving and sharing driving and maybe possibly uh using uh rental vehicles to occasionally to drive.
And we're having that conversation in Saint Albert in our, in our land use bylaw review. So, but the question really is a you get rid of parking requirements. It's up to the builder and the developer to, to know the market and understand what the ratio. So I'm just kind of curious, maybe for not this development, for, for future ones.
Sure.
Is it one point two stalls per unit or?
Yeah, I think your, your parking bylaw is, is too severe. It's, it, 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 I'd think you have room to bring it down overall in your city, if you decide to. I think uh to have, like, we have the, we have these buildings built already, and we have four buildings built. We have stalls that are not rented. Okay, but we've built them. Okay, so technically, there's no use for all of them.
Right.
And we, we're going to comply to your parking bylaw if that's what you want. But I don't believe that should be moving forward. So let me tell you about this zero, zero parking tower I did in Calgary. So when I did that, I had to amend the zoning. So I had to go to city council at that time. Uh, Mayor Nancy was the mayor of Calgary. So he stood up, he said, this is exactly what we want, because there was councilman against it. And they approved my land use amendment, and I built this tower. And everybody thought, you know, this guy's crazy. Okay? So I can tell you one thing, that tower is full. And that tower has a waiting list of people to move in, a waiting list.
Slightly different location, because it's
Zero parking.
But I remember that.
And I would never do that in Saint Albert, okay? But uh, is it possible in some high transit oriented sites that densified? Maybe downtown Edmonton, maybe. I don't think this can happen in your city for a while.
Okay, so did you not make that proposal because you were worried about maybe the public perception of less parking? Or you just think that for this location, the parking requirements?
We had, we had one comment, as he said, during the public open house, I said, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll respond to the public demand, and if that's what they
That was just one member of the public, right?
Well, it's, it's, I understand that, but I'd rather address the public concerns and deal with it.
Appreciate that. Okay. All right, um, okay, no more questions. Uh, thank you for coming and, and sharing your stories and letting us hear about the proposal. We have uh one member of the pu- public, um, and that is Mr. Ken Crutchfield. You're speaking to all three bylaws, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And then I'm going to come back to you in the next public hearing as well, but you're going to speak to all three?
Uh.
Or just overall?
To speak, well, I'd like to speak to this uh bylaw eighteen, nineteen.
Twenty, yeah, come on down, yeah.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you, Mayor Heron and uh councillors. Uh, I must admit, when I first got involved uh in this particular development, uh, I did not expect to be uh speaking much at all. Uh, I attended the uh the one uh open house that we had, uh, and I got uh some background there. And the concerns I had at that time are with regards to green space and, and parking development. And uh in the course of uh that particular open house, I, I came to understand uh more about the development that, that was being proposed. And a principal concern to me was the the fact that uh it would require some major amendments to the municipal development plan, the area structure plan, and even the land use bylaw. And I don't want to take up too much of your time here, other than to say that I think the fact that I'm speaking about a development that is well removed from where I live in Saint Albert, and yet the thing that strikes me is that the documents we're talking about, the municipal development plan, the area structure plan, the land use bylaw, uh, those are instruments of trust that the public have. And uh, you know, concerns were raised today about the shadow effect, and it hasn't been uh identified here at all. And yet, with another development at Riverbank, it was a big issue, as the residents got to know. And the fact of the matter is, is that uh the public, when the municipal development plan and the area structure plan was being discussed, the opportunities were there for people to go ahead and provide their input. Once those are approved, the public by and large, outside of the immediate, the residents immediately adjacent to the development, they're excluded from any further discussions that take place between administration and the developer. And yet, I am quite convinced that if news gets out about these tall buildings uh coming in, very likely you're going to get some feedback, particularly as they start building. Or once they're built, people start complaining about Orange Street parking and a variety of other issues. So I'd like to just go back to the fact that the municipal development plan and the area structure plans are, by and large, the documents that if I was an individual buying into a neighborhood, I would look at those and they would provide me with some guidance with regards to, well, that's a neighborhood that I want to live in. And I've seen this happen before, where, you know, the incremental decisions to provide for exceptions over the course of time cumulatively, have a tremendous impact on the the desirability of the area in terms of uh, it may go well beyond what was originally envisioned for that area. So I would say here right now is that uh, from my standpoint, when I looked at uh the agenda report, the arguments, the presentation that was made by administration, I think they were bang on. I think they're talking very critically about the principal documents of the big vision, the bigger vision of what you want here. And Saint Albert has a vision for, you know, major uh nodes for uh uh transportation and economizing. And the developer is quite right, uh, we're in a period of change. People are changing the demographics, uh, the demands that people want and everything else like that. But I'm of the opinion, let the marketplace play that. Uh, I believe that council has a responsibility here. Play that. I believe that council has a responsibility here to. Be custodians of the vision. What does St. Albert want to be? What does it want to look like? And if we allow for these exceptions to these municipal development plans and area structure plans. Without a lot of public in those communities being involved, and in some cases, there aren't even people living there right now about the future communities, whether they're Sheroot or. Some of the other communities that are being built. There aren't people people living there, but they will live there as a vision unfolds. And that municipal development plan, the area structure plan is very critical in that regard. So I would just say is that I I. Fully support the recommendations of administration in this regard. And I honestly believe that if you don't follow that, that municipal development plan, the area structure plans. It undermines the investment St. Albert has made in municipal planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. Anyone have any questions? I see no questions. Thank you for coming and we'll. Yeah, and you're sticking around for bylaw one, two. So that's, we'll see then. I see. We've gone through administration, the applicant and the public because there is no further public members wanting to speak to this. Any more questions of administration? Sorry, Counselor, can you look like you have a question? Oh, okay. You would like to make a motion to.
Your worship. I apologize for interrupting. We can't answer the OSL question.
You sent me that text. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
And I'll ask Donnie George.
Through the chair to Counselor Klicky, we track down the text that you are referring to. So what is carried out in the ASP is an old text because the oil existed from twenty twelve and onwards. So it was referring to a two thousand and seven agreement, basically stating that thou shall collect offset levy at the time of development agreement. So if there is a motion to amend the ASP, we can amend the text there to reflect the new ASP language. That's all it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Yep.
Okay, so that what you you push your button to make a motion though.
Yeah. Mayor, can I ask a quick question of administration?
Sorry, go ahead. Yep.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering about the the comment about that twenty stories being really the minimum number that the developers need. Are we seeing that across the city? Like are developers coming to us and say we can't build four story or eight story buildings?
Yeah, I'll ask planning perhaps to jump in. You know, I think that the calculus honestly is is the developers that do the calculus based on. You know, what they believe to be an economically viable approach. I would say that holistically in terms of what we're seeing across the city. I'll defer to the planning department to to comment.
Could you repeat that question, Counselor Jolly, just so that I can make sure that I understood it?
Yeah, so the proponent just kind of spoke to the fact that for for his organization, they cannot build under twenty stories.
Yes.
At at a high quality, if you will. Are we seeing that across the city that the developers are saying that they they can't build a good product? Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
I think he said efficiency, not quality. Yep, yep. Efficient, yep. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. If you have a question.
Okay, Adrian, don't go anywhere. So so we're having a bit of a talk here about the words efficiency. I guess I'm with. To clarify what Counselor Jolly said, are you getting requests from other developers to build at this height? In what you, because you guys get a lot of planning developments across your desk. Are we going to be seeing this request coming frequently right now? Or is this the other developers that are coming forward are able to build within our current guidelines?
Uh, thank you for the question. Counselor Hughes, so no, the, a lot of the inquiries that we get are generally within our heights as. As outlined within the land use by law and the zoning. And this is a one off. And frankly, I think I've mentioned it in the past. One of our developers that has approvals to go above twenty stories has the last that they've talked to administration that I'm more of has talked about going substantially less than that in height. So no, we are not hearing requests or needs to go above what is in the land use by law as currently allowed.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Masek, a question?
Thank you for administration. The just clarify, is the twenty five meters the eight stories and the thirty five would push it to ten if that was a request?
Adrian, I believe that the numbers that were used was eight and eleven, give or take, right? So the twenty under the current R four or R four designation, twenty five meters gives you eight stories and. Thirty five meters gives you eleven ish. Is that fair to say, Adrian?
Yeah, I think that's correct. Counselor Bremanski, ballparkish, we try to, I think if you might have recall, we actually tried to go away from. Stories because they do vary based on the the podium height and things like that, but it it would be ballpark around three store or three meters per story. Plus or minus, somewhere in that range.
Thank you.
I would suggest it's probably a minimum when you're talking about tower development at three meters. Would be the minimum that you'd have because you've got your, like, all your electrical and stuff like that. So it's it's, it's also depending on the quality too, because some of the other developers have gone to four meters because they want taller. Taller buildings.
Are you good? All right, now I see no more questions. Looking at you, Counselor Kilik.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring forward the.
We need to close the public hearing first. Okay, if you don't mind, can I get you to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay. That the public hearing for bylaw eighteen slash twenty twenty three, bylaw nineteen slash twenty twenty three and bylaw twenty. Slash twenty twenty three be closed.
Thank you for that. We'll call for the vote. Voting is closed and. It passes now. All right, I'll go back to you, Counselor Kilik.
So the request, Madam Mayor, is to bring forward the alternative motions that were proposed on page twenty eight of the. Slide package that include the MDP amendments. That would be add specific clauses to the MDP flourish as well as the proposed amendments to the village Sheru ASP and the land use bylaw. Uh, nine slash twenty twenty five. Again, those are on page twenty eight of our agenda package.
All right, so we've done number one, close the public hearing. And so let's go with number two.
That bylaw eighteen twenty twenty three being amended, amendment two to the municipal development plan flourish, be read a first time.
All right, I'll accept that. Do you have any comments on first reading?
Just to say that we have to follow the order of hierarchy in our in our documents. And obviously, we have to start with the municipal development plan flourish first and then get to ASP and L U B. So we're following that. That order and. I think we're all all aware of how flourish was meant to guide us as one of our speakers presented. But it's also up to council to look at the broader. Implications and and in this case benefits. So we started the top down of our highest level documentation and and we'll work through the next steps. But it's it's up. And I think it was also mentioned in the background or that council owns the. Documentation going forward. So I'm I'm pleased to bring this forward to. Uh, start the process of moving towards how we can get this approved.
Thank you for that. All right, Counselor Hughes.
I just had a question to admit. So your recommendations were to approve first reading regardless. So I'm thinking everybody needs to vote for first reading and then if they have different opinions, it'd be in second reading. Is that just the general impression? Yes, that's correct. Okay, just so that people don't vote no when they think that they have an option at this moment. Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKay?
Yeah, no, that was good clarification, actually, but I would want to speak to the actual motion in the sense that. Like Counselor Kilik, I I see the MDP document as visionary. It's not regulatory. It is high level. It is where we actually kind of look at what's going to be. Happening from a fifty thousand foot level or a hundred thousand foot level or a twenty story foot level. But I I I see it as a visionary document as to something that we own. And we're guided by changes in the environment. So. Is, I just want to make sure sure it's that everybody understands that it's not a regulatory document at this particular time. It's a visionary document and we own it.
All right. See no more hands up. Anything to close off first reading?
Uh, just that the word flourish means exactly that. And I and I think these changes will help the. Move us, move the city forward in a way that will see us flourish. And so I think I I hope that we all see it the same way and will support this.
All right, call for the vote. Voting is closed. That passes unanimously. Counselor Kilik, you want to do second reading?
Uh, that unanimous or that bylaw, sorry, eighteen twenty twenty three be read a second time. I'm just apologize, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Okay, all right. Any comments on second reading? Nothing from you, Counselor?
Uh, nothing, nothing additional. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Hughes.
I think you, I won't be supporting this. Administration's gone through a lot of work to look, really review these documents and to say what can and can't be done and what should be done. We put in how many years into determining what the MDP should look like, where the concentration of the of the. Density should be. It was quite clear it should not be in the outlying areas. This is a complete conflict to where we're looking at for high density nodes. Two hundred units per hectare is. It's not necessary to be achievable for set for development to be profitable. And the statements that we can save money so it will come back in rent, it's not how it works. People save money, they keep more money in their own pocket, they don't reduce the rents. They're not going to say we saved a thousand dollars a month, so then the rents are going to be eight hundred dollars a month, not twenty four hundred dollars. It's not going to say that. The rents are going to be whatever the market will bear, regardless of where the cost to build. So the idea that this is somehow going to create more affordable housing with more luxury amenities is just a statement. I'd be curious to see if it ever actually happened. I did not see it, foresee it happening. But what I am seeing is a one off where we're having. Twenty story standards. And you can say this is just one case. It is a precedent setting. What administration was warning was true. That once we start rolling down this roll hill, whereas now all of a sudden. We say it here, why can't we say it somewhere else? And before you know it, twenty standards stories is the standard. And perhaps it is the vision for some people in this council, but I don't think it's sufficient for majority people who live in St. Albert. The quaint appointment, the quaint neighborhoods is what they're looking for, not the twenty stories. And we're already seeing approvals of twenty stories, as you've seen, that have never materialized. So. I I just don't believe that you need twenty to build twenty stories to be able to be profitable, certainly not for rentals. We have how many properties around this community that are not anywhere near this? That are still profitable in a rental and or sale market. So. The justification to move this to this level, I just don't see it. And I just don't think that this is what. The public, if I don't even think the public for the most part are even aware of what's happening. Uh, Mr. Crutchfield, who is extremely involved in the community, he did attend. He was the only person in St. Albert who even was aware of what was happening at the open house other than two councillors. And so I don't think the public's even aware of what was going to be approved today, quite frankly. We're not doing first reading and then waiting two weeks for the for the Gazette to talk and and let the public even be aware of this. I think they're all just going to be very surprised in the paper on Thursday as to what just happened today. And. I just, I don't think that the standard of twenty stories everywhere in St. Albert is one that I can support. And I do not see putting out there as no outlying area creating definitely more traffic issues. And definitely not have the trans stability that we would expect when we're building this kind of transit oriented developments of two hundred units per hectare. It just doesn't mesh. And and quite frankly, I just don't see the necessity. I understand the developers would want for it. I understand how they will save money many times over by building it this way. But that does not mean that this is what the residents want and it does not mean that it's necessary to actually build a quality development. So we just keep pushing the standards. I'm sorry. So thank you.
All right, Counselor Jolly.
Thank you. So this is really exactly what St. Albert needs in downtown. If this was next to a transit hub, it would be so easy to support. But you know, like Counselor Hughes, I'm I'm not prepared to abandon. Our densification strategy that was developed through years of research and community engagement. I'm proud of flourish and I I don't want to send the message to developers or residents that our MDP can be changed without. Kind of the engagement that we invested through flourish. This is, it's a brand new plan. It's not a ten year old plan. It it really feels like we're we're trying to boil. Boil frogs by slowly hacking at our thoughtful strategies. And Mr. Crutchfield touched on this more eloquently than I did, but really what's happening is we're losing our our bigger vision through these incremental changes. And I absolutely appreciate that that vision is going to change, but flourish is brand new. I'd also like to point on that that idea that rental prices are driven by. Market. You know, certainly a developer can make a lot more money if if they're able to build. At a lower price per unit, but but that won't impact what renters are going to see. So ultimately, my my commitment to the government of this governance of the city, it's not limited to our short term goals. I'm deeply committed to increasing housing options and and increasing density, but but not at the expense of a vibrant downtown. Or a a community where our residents can rely or have to rely on cars for transportation or where there's no trust in our our long term strategies. So that's why I'm not supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Counselor McKay?
I'm going to take the other side. I could address each and every one of the digital or identifying points, but I'm not going to do that. We're talking about a proposal that actually, if you look at it and you go look at the presentation provided by the proponent. And it does just about tick off every one of our boxes that currently make up flourish. So, yeah, we're talking maybe a little bit in the sense that it doesn't follow where our transportation hub is or where our. St. Albert Trail is, but look at where our growth is. Our growth is in the west end of the city. Our growth is, yes, true, it is moving up to the north, but. Our major business park that the one remaining business park that we're. That we potentially have on the books. Is going to be in that area and as identified by economic development, look at all of the benefits that that's going to provide our our residents, our community. And we're going to attract somebody that maybe doesn't want that quaint little two bedroom bungalow that is in a cul-de-sac. Or a double keyhole cul-de-sac. I mean, I don't necessarily potentially will want to live in a twenty story tower. But I know people that do. And I think the vision of the developer has some credibility here. I mean, in the sense that. He's creating an intergenerational village where. Not only current members of our community, but future members of our community have a have a have a chance to examine it, move in, live in. And it's also going to be a development that is going to benefit. Like some, all of our natural resources, it takes advantage of many of our natural resources. So I I certainly don't think that we are abandoning any of our flourish goals. I don't think we're abandoning the 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 vision of flourish. We we're looking at nodes and we don't want to get into that whole conversation we had with Riverbank Landing about. Why did we identify this node in map three? Because that will. I mean, here, here we go again. But I mean, at the same time, we we're talking about a greenfield community. That where we're actually have a developer who's. That where we're actually have a developer who's going to say, this is what I'm building. And if. New residents move in and they, they know what's going to be there. They're going to, they know if we approve this, there's going to be. This mixed-use village, it, it's going to have a transition from a four-story, five-story, eight-story. It's going to transition into two towers, twenty stories. We don't know when that is. The market's going to drive that. But potentially you're going to have that available for residents that know that that's what they're moving into versus what caught residents off guard. With the approval of Riverbank Landing. So I think what you're seeing here is an opportunity. That is a bit going to actually improve our community. For all of the benefits that our economic development. Uh, office identified. So I'm going to, I, I support this. For all of those reasons and many, many more that I don't think I'll have time to mention.
Thank you, Council McKay, Council Bromansky, and then I'll go to you, Council Broadhead.
Thank you through the mayor. Um, this one's a tough one. I, I do respect the developers, you know, for your vision and. You know, and what you see is a future for the community and, and of course, the investment in our community in, in doing that. But the, uh, the toughest part for me is, is standing beside the residents of, of Riverside that, you know, they. They own their homes there. They bought into that neighborhood and, and, um, you know. Maybe not everyone knows about the municipal development plan, but most would, would be surprised as mentioned particularly by Mr. Crutchfield and others. That all of a sudden there's twenty-story towers going in a total rental development, you know, next to where they just built their home. Um, or own their home. And I also understand, you know, the comments from the developer about, you know. People just leasing cars. Well, that's because vehicles depreciate and it's an affordability issue with rental. And, um, the fact is there's, you know, I mean, there are people choosing to just rent because they have no choice. But there's other people that do want to rent. So it's, it's again, providing for all members of the community, but to, to just, um. Again, surprise the, the communities next door with these, you know, towers that weren't mentioned. Uh, previously and, and would be a surprise to a large number of the citizens, I would suspect is, it seems a little bit. Um. Premature or sort of irrational, I guess, at this time. And if a twenty-story tower comes, you know, down the road, uh, like was mentioned in other developments, you have say a. A twelve-story and then your next time you do that twenty-story when, you know, when it's, it's decided that it works for the community. So again, I appreciate both sides to the argument, but at this particular time, I have to just consider that the. The community, uh, the community values, the community, um, not having a say really in it at this point in time. Um, would be difficult for me to stand behind. So again, thank you to all of you, but I can't support this one.
Council Broadhead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh. When I saw this, uh, on the agenda today, it was intriguing to me because I knew that this would be. Uh. A debate of varying viewpoints. And quite honestly, I suspect if you lined up people in, in St. Albert, uh, they would have varying viewpoints as well. But, uh, that's why we're elected is to take these, uh. Opportunities, if you will, and assess whether or not. Uh, they're good for the community that we have been elected to support. And, and sometimes as an elected official, you're also elected to be visionary about what the, the city will in fact be. And I recognize that perhaps this is a bit of a, uh, variation on flourish. But in flourish, it's not as if high-rise development was not anticipated. It was, it just, this particular project doesn't confi- conform to a particular node. But the idea of, of whether or not St. Albert is going to have a twenty-story tower or twenty-five-story towers already been. It's already been debated. And that, that ship is sailed in many respects. It may not have sailed for Ville Giroux. And that's what we're doing here today, but the city of St. Albert understands that as we develop and as we densify. Uh, tower accommodation will be part of the future. And so from my perspective, uh, when we were developing flourish. This particular project was, was not on the agenda and so it wasn't included. But quite honestly, I believe it's well-placed. It's, it's right along the. Uh, transportation corridor through our community. It's right to in proximity to our future amenities sites. It's in proximity to our, um, uh, to the, uh. Lakeview Business District. So it's not as if it's ill-planned or ill-placed. It's just different. And council needs to be able to, uh, take a look at what difference means. And then four beats three. And so when council votes today, they're voting on the future of our community. Not what is today. They're voting for what the future is going to look like. And the future will be a denser community that's less spread out. That's more, uh, efficient in terms of how we develop our land. And we have to be able to, uh, consider developments like this in the light of how we develop our community going forward. We can't continue to develop, uh, single-family dwellings off into the horizon, eating up all of the land. Urban sprawl is not good for anyone. And so we're in a metropolitan region. And we're densifying. And this is going to come, whether it comes today. Or whether it comes ten years from now, but this is going to come. And I think this is a good development for our community. And so it has my support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Broadhead. I noticed you had pushed your, but you get too close, sir, because it's your motion. So I'm just going to weigh in. Um, I'll probably just weigh in on this one by law because my comments are all encompassing to MDP, ASP and LEB. I'll start with, um. This world needs, in this region, needs to build up, not out. When I say that, you can probably tell where I'm going to go with my comments. Um. And I'll start with, I, I love flourish as well, and I think it's a fantastic municipal development plan. Um, and I think if it was being developed. Now, like a parallel to this proposal or in the future. Um, this proposal would probably have been welcomed. Um. Flourish calls for thirteen thousand new jobs. Thirteen thousand, that those people and families are kind of need somewhere to live. And this country and region is in a housing crisis, which is why I think this is a fantastic development. Uh, I want to point out the transit already exists in Ville Giroux. Um, and although it's not planned to be a rapid transit, neither was Riverbank, and we did approve that as a council. It, in the, the rapid transit that we, that we're planning going down St. Albert Trail also may never be realized. It could be fifty years. And so you can't link the rapid transit. To this kind of density so closely. I mean, it would be great in a perfect world, but I'm not sure. We're pushing all future commercial and civic amenities in this northwest direction. Um, so I think that's why this is a perfectly placed, um. Part of the city to do this. It's very close to Ray Given Drive. Um. Who knows if that eventually has transit running down it, but it does have good transportation access. There's enough infrastructure in the way of water, sewer and storm, and any additional traffic has been examined and it can be easily accommodated. These kind of high-density projects are very good for our bottom line as municipality. They bring in a lot of assessment dollars with, um, quite less, uh, demands on our infrastructure. And so this is, uh, this is a good return on the dollar for tax dollars. Of course, administration, and I, I understand and I agree with them that this may set a precedent. And indicate that this kind of proposed density is acceptable anywhere in St. Albert. My only disagreement with that is this density in my mind is acceptable because it's next door to seven thousand jobs. Lakeview Business District. I don't think I would be so easy to approve this, uh, elsewhere in the city, but we're going to need this for Lakeview. And I see the downtown development is very different because what is being proposed in the downtown is condo ownership. While this proposal is completely in a hundred percent rental, which is something we need, and that has been indicated by our Economic Development Department. I think the density will be great to support, uh, the commercial in Riverside. The existing commercial in Ville Giroux and the eventual commercial that will occur in that small corner of Lakeview and into, um, Chero. Uh. I see another advantage is, this is essentially a greenfield development. Um, we're not going to be facing the same kind of opposition we saw when Amicon proposed or Riverbank because they're not infill. Uh, no, like Riverside is developing, but. Right beside where these towers are proposed, there is nobody living there yet, and there's nobody living in Chero yet. So those future homeowners will know exactly what they are buying when they buy their home close by. When they talk about jobs, I got to remind everybody that economic prosperity is like one of our key strategic priorities. And, and Council McKay said it really well, and so did Council Broadhead. Um, we don't know what future residents want. And so we need to provide this kind of diversity. It's part of our strategic plan to have diversity. And so I really hope this council, um, and the city can be seen as a community that. That welcomes a bold type of development. Um. Sidex made the investment in St. Albert. I can't remember. There we go, eight years ago, and I remember having lunch and it's nice to see something coming forward now that is bold. What we've seen in St. Albert has been a good development, but I did. Do my little bit of research and check with Edmonton and Calgary where most of your development is done. And the councillors I talked to there were, were saying embrace Sidex, embrace their development. They are good, good partners to work with. And so that, that gives me a lot of, um, satisfaction to hear that I'm not going to be struggling with, with the landowner and their, and their vision. So I am a hundred percent beside, behind this, Council Killick. I'm going to let you close.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just to close and briefly is, uh, I think. Most of the points have been covered, uh, but specifically, um, flourish is. It was a document that was created to guide us to a hundred thousand, uh, population. Uh, the only way we're going to get to a hundred thousand population is with these higher-density. Uh, type towers and the people that, that they will, they will bring. Um, so there's, there, at, at the highest level, there, in my mind, there, there is alignment. Now, I absolutely admit I was not on council when flourish was approved. However, as a resident, you know, I was actively engaged as Counselor McKay reminded me on. The pink node versus the blue node, but, um, so I, I feel I, I have a lot of. Um, engagement in, in what flourish was about. And, um, this, this is a key. Uh, step in, in that direction. The other one is just the alignment to our whole number one highest priority strategic council imperative. Is, uh, commercial. Uh, industrial, light industrial development on our Lakeview Business District. We have to get that done so that we can shift our. Uh, tax base away from residential over to commercial and free up money to do other things. The only way we're going to get commercial development is when those buildings get built. Those people know that are going to work there know that they have a place to live. And this will help, um, deliver that. It's a perfect location. The towers are over close to the commercial. They're, they're away from the train tracks. They open up green space because they're dense. They actually give more, um. Uh, green space on the south side of the building, which is where the sun shines. It's going to be a beautiful park there. Uh, you go with a lower height buildings and they get spread out and you chew up all the, the, the green space. This, this is the exact opposite. You go vertical, you free up green space, you have beautiful parks and open area. Um, for, uh, residents to enjoy. Connects to a trail system that joins up to our downtown. Signals to our develop, other developers that we're, uh, um, we're willing to take these big. New steps in our development plan. That's what we want to signal to make our downtown vibrant. Uh, we want to see investors go and say, hey, they, they took that leap of faith and agreed to these towers. That's the kind of community we want to invest in. This will draw other investments to our community. It will put us on the map. People will say, yes, St. Albert is willing to take these chances. They have a good document that, that helps guide the long-term plan, but they're also willing to adjust. Uh, and make changes as, as the market changes. As, as consumers say, hey, I don't want to buy that house anymore. I want to live in a rental. Um, I, I'm speaking personally because neighbors actually down the street from me, three houses. Moved into, sold their home, moved out and are in one of the, the Villa Giroux rental, uh, properties. They love it. I've gone and visited them. It's a great location. So I, I have some, some passion with that. It meets our transition goals, going from four stories to eight stories up to a, a twenty-story, uh, building. Um, and as well, I think it, it, it does signal to the people in Riverside. It's bare land directly to the south. They will now know what they are going to. However, that gets developed out and that may go through a change too. Uh, but it will. It will signal to them that, hey, I know there's going to be a building over there, uh, that's twenty stories. So for all of those reasons, but most importantly, that it ties into our long-term goals. Of how we're going to develop Lakeview and attract new businesses that need workers, that need. Those workers need a place to live. This is the right direction for us to go. And I hope everybody is supportive of, of this, moving in this direction.
Call for the vote. Voting is closed. And then motion passes my majority, sorry, with Counselor Bromansky, Hughes and Jolly opposed. Uh, I need, where we unanimous consent to go to third reading? Someone want to make that one? You'll try and make it?
Well, my buttons have been slow all day here.
Go ahead.
Uh, that unanimous consent be given to, for consideration of third reading of bylaw eighteen slash twenty twenty-three.
Anything on that?
No.
Okay, call for the vote. Sorry. Voting's closed. That fails, so we cannot go to third reading. Counselor Bromansky, can you let us know what you need before you get to third reading?
Um, I'd just love to have the, a little bit of public feedback time on this one. It's, uh, it's a pretty big decision, so I think it just, a rest time would be good.
All right, but we can go on to bylaw nineteen, correct?
Mayor, sir, can I ask a question about that?
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
So with the public hearing closed, how does that impact public feedback for this?
We followed every legislative procedure. To get to this point.
Yeah.
We're just delaying it now. So.
Yeah, I know, but, but Council Bromansky.
The question is, we've filled our legislative obligations to a public hearing.
Yeah.
If we get any new information.
Yeah. We can't use that, right?
Public hearing is completely.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Destroyed.
Well, no, the public hearing is done. There's always the option of setting another public hearing for the bylaws. Um, and sorry, I was just conversing back here. So is the question if more, if public engagement is done between now and third reading?
Is that what you're looking for?
No, just if we get hammered with emails, what are we supposed to do with them over the next?
Because they're not public now.
Yeah.
Well, so if you get questions about what's happened, you can just specifically say that the bylaw for amending the MDP received first and second reading, and it will go to third reading on the date that will be set by agenda planning. Um, and sorry, I'm not sure if I can offer more.
I think I think I know what Counselor Jolly's concern is. According to the MGA, the input on a something like this has to be public. So you can't now go to the grocery store and hear your neighbor say, I don't want this because it was not part of the public hearing. So is I think her question is, is the only way to make this legislatively correct, do another public hearing?
Yes, either that or tell folks that the public hearing has been closed and we can't consider further information at this point in time.
So Counselor Bromansky, I need to look at you and ask you what what you're trying to achieve here. Are you, all the, all the requirements have been met?
The requirements have been met except the knowledge to a lot of people in the community. So.
Point of order of we, the whole purpose of a public hearing, it was advertised. It was put in the Gazette. It was advertised in the Gazette. The proponent went there. Uh, two counselors showed up, one resident. That was, I mean, it, all of the obligations are met.
So I guess the question is the only way to achieve what I think you want is to schedule another public hearing.
If need be, yes.
So do we have to vote on scheduling another public hearing?
No, public hearings can be set at the discretion of agenda planning, so we don't need to vote on that. Um, that's the answer to that.
Yeah. Well, third readings or unanimous consent has failed already, so.
In terms of proceeding forward from here today, we do have the bylaws nineteen and twenty, so the MDP bylaw hasn't been amended, so we should do first reading for nineteen and twenty. But they cannot pass today.
But we could do second reading.
You can do second reading. Um, but they, they cannot pass today. Yep.
Yeah. Let me, I I need a, I need a second. I need calling in five minutes cuz I just yeah. Talking and figuring things out. Legal counsel's not here, but she has informed us we cannot have second public hearing after second reading cuz the MGA says public hearings need to be before second reading, so that's out. Um, sorry, but whatever. Um, and then the other you know, issue is that member councils looking for more public input, but that would be outside of public hearing, so our legal counsel has already told me that if this doesn't go through tonight or then um, she will be sending us all an email instructing us to not listen to any more resident feedback because of Counselor Hughes. Here's something that Counselor Broadhead is unaware, and that's not fair. It's not, it's not transparent. And it calls into question the integrity of our public hearing. So I've made the decision to get third reading done through a special council meeting that I will, I will I, as mayor, can call a special council meeting at any time. If it's less than twenty-four hours, I need two-thirds of this council to sign that we will do that special council meeting. So alleged officers are drafting um the call for the special council meeting to recur immediately following this meeting. And we will deal with third reading of that bylaw at the time, but as rightly instructed by legal counsel, we should not do uh third reading of um bylaw nineteen or twenty until eighteen is passed.
That's correct. I would, I would suggest just doing first reading of nineteen and twenty.
Exactly.
And then waiting till the special council meeting to do second.
Third, okay.
Can I ask a question? Cuz we have two people that are remote. How are you gonna get those signatures? Or do you have a workaround?
Yes, we will send form through to everybody for electronic signature or people who are in person. We can get web, web signatures.
Okay, you have your plan. That's good.
So Counselor Jolly and Counselor Broadhead. Is Counselor Jolly with us? She is.
Yeah.
Okay, you you should get an email. Is that what I'm expecting?
That's right. It'll be an Adobe sign.
Adobe sign?
Asking to sign the waiver of the twenty-four hour notice of the call of a special council meeting.
All right. Counselor Kilik, I'm gonna get you to go to um.
First reading.
First reading of. First reading of by law eighteen.
Yep.
Sorry, nineteen.
Nineteen. That. This is bullet number six that by law nineteen slash twenty twenty three being amendment two to the village Giroux area structure plan. Be read a first time.
Thank you, accept that, any comments on it?
Well, I think we've all said that we have to follow the rules, have flourish MDP. Leads us to this next step of the area structure plan. We've had all the comments on debate of, of. What this would bring forward, so. The, the detail changes as listed in, in the ASB needed to move this forward. That's what we're voting on now.
Anyone else have comments on by law nineteen?
Just a reminder, so we all vote in favor of first reading regardless of your position, just.
Yeah, this, this just gets it on the table.
Yeah, I just, just so. We don't have any confusion, that's all.
All right, let's see no other hands up, call for the vote. Sorry. I'm looking at you, that, that, that motion passes unanimously, I missed it. All right, and well, why don't we skip then to. Yes, ten in the list motion, so that's by law twenty.
So this is the detail that by law twenty twenty three being amendment two. Hundred and seventeen to the land use by law nine slash twenty zero five, you read a first time.
Nothing.
And, and nothing further, other than again to repeat as Council Hughes mentioned. First reading simply gets it on the books for. Second and third reading and debate, etc.
Okay. Seeing no other hands up, I will go to. Call the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. Okay. Apologize guys, welcome to stick around, but we have. To, we have to finish this meeting first, we. Have another public hearing and then. A council motion and then a few in camera things that might, might be a while, but you're obviously welcome to stick around. But let's get on to by law one, which is a land use by law amendment in regards to designated floodplain lines, I will. Open the public hearing on by law one slash two thousand and twenty three. And we will, I've already read the process, but I will just quickly look. And see if there's any counselor who wants to declare a conflict of interest. Seeing none. I'm going to go straight to Adrian, who is presenting this L U B amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel, just give me a moment to share my screen here and then confirm that. Are you able to, are you able to see the cover? Okay, all right, excellent, good afternoon, Mayor Counsel, I'm Adrian Slapp from the Planning and Development Department, I am here to present. By law one slash twenty twenty three, which includes amendments to the land use by law part six, general regulations. And schedule G be designated floodline. As you are aware, this item was first introduced to council on June twentieth two, two thousand and twenty three. The public hearing was adjourned from June twenty to August fifteen to enable more engagement with attendees of the June, June twentieth meeting. The August fifteen hearing was adjourned from August fifteen to October seventeen to enable administration additional. Drafting revision reconsideration of the proposed amendments. So just as a review, there are three primary amendments being discussed, the first of the amendments is for part six one twelve or six twelve. Was a housekeeping item to ensure land use by law compliance with the policies of the city approved. L U B, N D P, A S Ps and A R Ps and neighborhood plans or concept plans. Additionally, administration had also proposed amendments part six one one of the land use by law general regs. Those were to deal with the flood. The floodplain itself, the designated floodline and the schedule G floodline map. The request is being made to reflect recently completed studies by the city, including the Care Creek Regional Drainage Master Plan. And the province, the St Albert flood hazard study. It incorporates more current studies, the twenty two. Two thousand and twenty two Care Creek Regional Drainage Master Plan, the twenty two St Albert hazard flood hazard study. And informs the St Albert West A S P. It also is assumed to be more accurate mapping than it currently exists within land use by law for the scheduled G floodline. Administration finds these amendments to be supportive of policies approved within flourish the city's municipal development plan. So just to, just to recap, I'll, I'll walk through the. The flood maps that generated more interest at the June twentieth. Hearing, as a reminder, the new maps are, are draft, as drafted incorporate a free board of zero point three meters to accommodate anticipated change climate change concerns. And there is an additional zero point five meter factor of safety. Through the existing land use by law regulations, which would limit development within the floodplain. So this is from north to south, this is the draft designated floodline map. On the Care Creek corridor, crossing the CN rail line as we go south. We had substantial discussion about the Shiro. Neighborhood area and in particular, the current versus. Proposed floodline and the expansion of, of that floodline in some areas. And then as we go down along. More along the downtown areas, you may recall. The thing that was highlighted here was just to the east of the railroad trestle bridge. The Millennium Park Lions Park area is designated as protected flood fringe, so it is. It would be within the floodline, a designated floodline absent the berm, but because the berm is there, that is developable land as we view it. And then moving. To the east, as I highlighted at the previous. At the previous discussion, there are several properties on the north side of the Sturgeon River between. St Albert Trail Bridge and the Perron Street Bridge, which are in. Or impacted, the structures themselves are impacted. By the floodline and it, there, there are only, I believe it's three properties, three structures out of the twenty two some odd thousand structures within the city. That are impacted by the floodline and those remain impacted under this revised mapping, so that's. I mean, I'll say it again, it's. A lot of communities wish they were in our position to have. To have made the right decisions back in time. To follow kind of. A good development limitation and make sure that. We got the appropriate E R and M R designations to protect our floodlands, so that's, that's a good news story. Going into the kind of nature of. The engagement that has occurred since June twentieth, administration, administration has met with representatives from the development industry, I think around six, maybe seven times, something like that. Discussion within, with, with industry has revolved around providing more specifics as to. What type of, what type of floodplain development may be considered? As well as providing more flexibility for administration to consider technical solutions to development. In the flood, in the floodplain and to allow stormwater facilities below the designated floodline. So the, the essence of this is that. Under the. Alternative one, the new. New language that was provided by administration. Any approvals would be subject to city engineer approval done in consultation with other city departments. I, I think it's fair to say that. Administration, industry are still somewhat ideologically opposed on. On what could or couldn't happen within the designated floodline. But the consultation with the city engineer clause mitigates some of that concern, and I think that's. What industry will probably tell you today if they speak is that. The idea is that they would like to have the opportunity to provide solutions without having to go back for a land use by law amendment. So they could, if they. I think the example that we talked about was if you go to Germany and you see some sort of new technology about stormwater facilities and it mitigates all risks and concerns, but it is within the. Designated floodline area. You could bring that and you could demonstrate why that would work. To administration and then they could consider that. Without having to go back through land use by law amendment to enable. Anything other than a constructed wetland as a stormwater facility. Administration is. Aware of one developer that is awaiting certainty on the scheduled G floodline in order to move forward with a proposed area structure plan amendment. As noted within the council agenda report, administration did receive one comment from the public. That was included cautioning against any development within the floodplain. And then administration notes that there was one additional comment dated October ten or a series of comments dated October ten, twenty twenty three. Those comments included a lack of access to the provincial flood study. And I'm not sure why that wasn't available exactly, I know that the, there was a. A link within the reports to the provincial draft flood study page at A E P, so I'm, I'm not sure what happened there, but. And then the, the second comment was a lack of clarity about the additional elevation of the zero point three meters. Being added to the point five meter factor of safety and a request for the amendment, the current land use by law amendment being considered. To explicitly state that. And I'll just speak to that, so administration used provincial draft flood study line work. In order to map our, our new schedule G. And then added the point three meters on top of the elevations that we have. And we already have the. Point, point five meter factor of safety within the land use by law amendment, so I'm not sure what else, what other certainty the. The member of the public is asking for there, but I believe he is here to speak, so he can clarify that. And then the third bullet that was mentioned was a request for a statement that only errors in the determination of the floodline be considered. And I, I'll just say that this type of considerate or this type of statement would be supportive of the original recommendation. That council did not move forward with on June twentieth. And then I think there was also, there's been some question about what the provincial engagement with the draft flood study is. So the province, I, I think that was mentioned in the June twentieth report, we did move forward. With. These land use by law amendments prior to. The province ratifying their draft flood study, in part because we need these lines for. Schedule G. We've got other developers that are waiting for the, the schedule or the, the floodline in order to get certainty about how they go move forward with their area structure plan amendments. So that was why we moved forward. That what we understood from the province, and I think this still holds true, is that the technical line. Has not changed, won't change, that the study was done. The engagement is, to my understanding, the informing end of the spectrum of engagement, so it's more detailing. What, what the flood. What the new floodline means to people, covering off types of definitions of floodline versus flood fringe and. Floodway and those type of things, types of things, so the technical line that we use as our basis. Has not changed and the provincial engagement is still moving forward this fall, to my understanding. Okay. So there were several recommendations, as you noted in the report, there's the original recommendation. The administration provided on June twentieth, which very much restricts. Floodplain development and limits stormwater facilities below the designated floodline to the natural, naturalized wetland only. There's alternative motion one, which is what was developed with industry input. And that, that would enable that council approved development as outlined subject, floodplain development as outlined and subject to a technical studies. And approval by the city engineer. And then the alternative, there's a, a third alternative motion two. Which would basically ask that council approve the original six point one two, because there has been no comment received on that. The schedule G. Which is the technical floodline and the direct further work on the, the language, the wording of. Six point one one itself. And then there's of course the do nothing option. And I'll just add here that I think there was a question about. That had come up about how, how fees would, how fees would be managed. If, if we did move forward with the, like a. Well, I guess any of the first two motions, basically there, there's no fees contemplated at this time for city engineer review directly, we often. Review things per the city engineer's approval. However, if, if those reviews included an amendment to the designated floodline. Then the benefiting landowners would be responsible for any land use by law amendment application fee as, as well as the technical fees. That would be required to support the justification of the amendment itself, so. And with that, I have nothing further to add at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Adrian. Got questions of, Council Hughes, I've got you up for a question, is that from previous?
Okay, it was from previous, okay, I have questions anyway, so I can wait, I'll just wait for my turn.
Okay, Council Mackay first.
No, I'll be quick, I can't remember if we discussed this previously, Adrian, so I apologize if it has been something. You touched a little bit on the engagement with the province around. Notification. More consultation, is there a duty to notify on behalf of us in relation to those? Kind of impacted properties that are now in the floodlane, floodlane, floodline? Do we have a duty to notify or have we done that or?
Yes, thank you for the question, Council Mackay, so I think we did talk about this at the, at the June twentieth meeting, so. We, we notified, this is technically, it's a citywide math amendment, so we, we noticed through the. City lights, etc., we did notify those. Active land developers that were. Viewed as being more potentially impacted in the near term about the change to the floodline. The, the floodline within the downtown. The main, the remainder of the city Sturgeon Valley corridor itself didn't impact. Any properties differently than they were already impacted and we did contact those properties. That were impacted to, to see if they had any concerns and administration did not receive. Any comments from those property owners. Just off of the downtown there.
So there's nothing, there's no requirement for any. Potential, any future liability on behalf of the city that we can say, well, we've notified you that you are now. In a new floodplain or new floodline, we, we. Don't have any further obligation other than what we've already done then?
Yeah, I believe we followed all the requirements of the M G A for noticing.
And did, and that's well documented then?
Yes.
Okay. Council Kilik.
Thank you. Adrian, with, with the proposed. Wording that we've got on the screen, when I, when I looked at the document itself, the blue line version. I, I was having a hard time finding. I, I was having a hard time finding where the wording and I, I, I would say I do like the wording. Um, uh, it was on page one forty-two where it says, you know, this, this allows us to work with the developers. Right? The, the new alternative language as written would allow the development industry to request consideration for development below the designated floodline based on engineering and or technical studies acceptable to the city. So I like that wording. I think that allows us to, to work with the developers. That's the way I, I read that. But then it, it goes on to say that that wording is then translated into, I think it was a blue line version. And it was on the page one hundred and forty-eight. It, it doesn't translate well over to the documentation. I, it doesn't show a six eleven you know, four item in, in there. Could you help me to understand where that shows up or? I want to make sure I understand, but I'm voting on.
Uh, yeah, Councillor Killick, so there's um, within the report itself, I, it's, I think it's titled language for alternatives one and two for consideration on October seventeen twenty twenty-three. Um. And that, that's the red line, blue line, purple line, green line version of the revised six eleven based on uh, discussion with uh, industry representatives. And then there is a clean version of that document um, as well.
But uh, but there, there should be some, it, it specifically references, maybe I'm reading it wrong. Says sixty-six eleven four J. And when I look at that, all it does is it's uh, blue lines struck through. So we're eliminating that clause. So that doesn't give me the feeling that um, as we, we said on page one forty-two, that we have the wording that would allow us as, as I read, um, read out would allow the development industry to request consideration. Where, how, how, where does that show up?
So maybe I can jump in here. Um.
Anybody to help?
Printed these out for this very specific reason because it's very hard to follow this. So I think the one that you're looking at, Councillor Killick, is the one for our recommended motion number four to make an amendment to take out four B and replace it with J. So one of the documents does look like that. But at the very end, we attached a fulsome. This, this one, it was the second last attachment um, in the agenda package. And so that section four says that notwithstanding, um, the following development shall be um, for discretionary uses below the designated floodline and shall be designed to meet or exceed the city's engineering standards and require the approval of the development officer in consultation with the city engineer. So that's where the discretion to work with them, in, as long as it's in accordance with our standards and up to the city engineer's approval gives them the ability that they're seeking. I hope that answers your question. I can show you where it is.
Yep, no, that's good. Um, but now I'm going to circle back around and say which motion. Um, it, I just want to make sure gives us uh, that, that gives us the city to enable uh, to do that. Cause I was again, having a little bit of a hard time lining up which, which one we're uh, we're, we're talking about.
So if you're, um, the one that the city's recommending is up at the top in the recommended motion section. So that would just amend section six one one four sub B to take out sub B and add that J.
Right.
So i- if that's not what you're asking to do, then I think what you're looking for is alternative one. And we've added the wording, proposed wording for motion in there, which is to amend the bylaw. Um. To do, basically delete six point one one that we presented as administration and replace it with this document that was worked on, um, since the public hearing was adjourned last.
Okay. Altern, alternative one gives us a flexibility to work with the developers.
That's correct.
Summarize that, cause it.
So what did you, what'd you say, Adrian?
I said that is, that is correct. Yes. It's, it's alternative one.
Okay. Okay. Thank, thank you very much for handholding me through that process.
You know, it's understandable. That's a, a lot of, a lot of different edits. Not, not the clearest one.
All right, Councillor Hughes.
Okay. I don't know where we are right now. So I don't even know what I'm voting on. So we're just going to go back and just assume I'm three. And what did we do to change since the last time? I know we had last time. I remember that. What was the big change, if anything, that we've done with the new one? With what we have today, is there any big, we soften the language potentially if we want to have it with, work with developers, right? Was there any other changes? Or we just voted on? And it's okay if it's not changed. I just want to make sure I know what I'm doing.
Yes, so uh, thank you for the question, Councillor Hughes. So again, um, the original motion basically said absolutely no development except for these, I think it was three or four land uses, which is like a golf course, et cetera. Um, park trails within the designated floodline and restricted um, stormwater facilities within the designated floodline to only the naturalized stormwater facility. Alternative one, uh, it basically enables development industry to approach administration with potential design solutions for development within the floodplain or within, uh, within that designated floodline, but that they would have to be to the satisfaction of the city engineer in order to proceed. So I think the notion was um, kind of put the technical discussion with the city engineer and enable some flexibility as to what could be considered by the city.
Okay. So and that's the, that's basically the only thing we have is we have a little bit more flexibility. That's the only change, right? Was, and it sounds like that was from the communication with the development industry that that's a way that we can compromise.
I, I would say that's the largest substantive change. There's a few nuances here and there, but that's by and large the, the biggest thing.
So again, just so we're clear, because you have alternative one, but we also have that whole list of um, motions, right? So I get, I get number one, let's close the public hearing. We're all together. So number two, read the first time. Okay. So where would the alternative one slip in here in the one to six?
We would swap out number four.
Number four.
Take out number four and put in the wording from alternative one into number four.
So you, I, and I'm thinking that you recommended the original, what we came for before. Because that was what we can be for before. And then you just put the alternative in case you wanted to soften it. Is that kind of, yeah, okay, seeing nods. Okay. So that's, okay. And with the alternative, you're comfortable with the alternative because it still has, where we have to still put our standards into it and we can still ensure that we're comfortable with whatever comes at place, right? Or do you have any real hesitancies, I guess, about putting in alternative one?
No, I, I, uh, as I said, I think this, this is what we discussed um, quite at length with
Yeah.
the, the development industry. And I think we came to an agreement that the city engineer is still the still the stop, um, or the, I guess, the, the goalie or whatever you want to call. Um, to ensure that nothing gets passed that wouldn't be acceptable to the city from a risk management perspective. And so that's kind of why we went uh, and crafted this alternate, uh, alternative one motion and alternative one language. Which is to say that development industry can provide some at, at least have a discussion, whereas before it was um, no discussion necessary. Thank you.
Okay. I understand exactly what I'm voting on now. Thank you. I got it. I think this is a good compromise and I appreciate how much effort you guys have put into this to try to find a solution for everybody involved. I'm prepared to put forward the motion to close public hearing.
We still have questions.
Okay, well then, when, when you're ready.
We have publics to hear from.
Oh dear. Councillor Charlie.
Uh, yeah, so to follow up on that, um, why isn't administration recommending alternative one?
Oh, uh, we put forward the, uh, because this is a continued public hearing, we just carried forward the June twentieth uh, motion as the original motion. And then based on council's direction to have further engagement, we wrote alternative one and then, um, I guess me just hedging my bets, I added the alternate motion two in case more work was asked to be done on six eleven to at least give some certainty on schedule G so that that uh, developer could move forward on their ASP amendment.
Okay, but no, no concerns with alternative one. That's, that's.
No, I, if this is what we've been working on for the past three months, I think it's a compromise among parties.
Great. Thank you. No other questions.
All right, any, so I didn't see no more questions from our council to administration. So I there is no proponent or applicant for this one. So I'm going to go straight to the public and I have my registered speaker list here. I have registered. Um, Sean Novak from ISL Engineering. Is Sean with us? It's kind of hard for me to jump back and forth here, so.
Yes.
There you are, Sean. Thank you for joining us. You are the first to register, so I'm going to go to you first. Um, you have five minutes.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Sean Novak from ISL Engineering and Land Services. I'm representing Translands with an avenues today. Um, just wanted to reiterate, yeah, we support and we request council to consider alternative one motion today. Uh, you know, for the following reasons, it reflects the substantive uh, and collaborative work we've done together over the last few months with administration. Um, it provides uh, flexibility for industry to collaborate with the city while still providing city engineering the ability to ensure design and construction uh, standards are met. Um, and that's uh, yeah, the summary here from ISL here today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, any uh, questions of Mr. Novak? Seeing none, I will go to I have David Bromley um, registered to speak. Mr. Bromley, you with us?
I am, I am.
Thanks for, for so long.
Yes, you've had a busy afternoon there. Um, interesting too. But anyway, um, the, the reason, the only thing I want to say again, I think there, there has been a compromise and, and uh, the, the amendment is, is certainly satisfactory to us. But I, I, one thing I did want to highlight, I, I've been involved in this project for eighteen years. And you know, it, 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 it is somewhat frustrating for, for us as developers that we have not even put a shovel in the ground um, over that timeframe. And, and one of the, the difficulties is that there's this um, constant uncertainty uh, of, of changing. And, and, and of course, time does change and changes and causes change to occur. But, but you know, I, I, when I got back involved in it two years ago, um, we had every intention of uh, developing avenue as a um, on, on the east and the west side of, of Carrot Creek. We had originally had designed all of the infrastructure and, and to this day. Infrastructure on the east side would satisfy the west side. Um, we made all the economics on that basis. And then there was a municipal development plan came along and just simply changed that land from what we considered it to always be residential to uh, to employment lands. And then we spent a lot of money on Nichols Applied Management to show that that wasn't worthwhile as in, as, as uh, employment lands. In fact, it'd be fifty to a hundred years before it got absorbed. Which obviously is not good for what we're, we're after and, and obviously the use of our infrastructure. And then, and then from there, we got into the aspect of the setback um, on the uh, from, from uh, the top of bank, went from thirty meters to fifty meters and I I'm hoping we're going to get that resolved. But again, that just took off more land. And then we got into the stormwater management pond issue, which we were dealing with today. And again, more land was being taken away from us. So it, it, it makes very, very difficult to operate in this environment that make things economically justifiable for that matter. And, and when people ask why prices of homes go up, you know, this is a, a, a clear reason. You know, I've had two consultants there today and I, and I know you had a tough decision to make this afternoon. But they've been, they've, they're going to charge me for the three or four hours each that they've been sitting there uh, to go through these processes. Time is, is money. And um, I just wanted to kind of highlight that in that this is, this is an issue in dealing with the development uh, of any, any project. But it, it, it seems a bit um, different in St. Albert than in another location. So I just wanted to say that. Um, but uh, anyway, I'm happy that we're getting to some resolution on this stormwater management side. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bromley. Any questions of Mr. Bromley? Let's see, Wes and, no, I see none. Okay, uh, the next scheduled speaker is Constance Gorley. Um. Is Constance with us? I think I saw her name on the Zoom call.
Yes, yes, I am, Madam Mayor.
Okay, when you're ready.
I don't uh, I don't have any further comments to add to Mr. Novaks. And uh, just want to say my full support for alternative one motion. It's before council. And to thank administration for the opportunity to collaborate and have those fulsome conversations. So that's where we're at and we hope council can move forward with alternative one. Thank you.
Thank you, Constance. Any questions? Seeing none, I have a, um, I have a tennis wish, wish you who is said she would just be here to answer any questions, but Tanis, did you have anything to add?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then my next registered speaker is Sue Keating and I see her online already. Sue, go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, good evening. I uh, I'm mostly echoing what um, Connie and Sean mentioned, but just wanted to say um, thanks for agreeing in June to postpone this to allow for the time needed for admin and industry to work together towards some revisions that reflect our collaborative efforts. Um, so um, similar to everyone else here today to support the alternative number one. Um, and this amends the original bylaw by deleting a section and um, there's some new language outlined in alternative number one that we support. Um. And just, yeah, I wanted to say that this reflects the collaborative efforts between our industry and the city's administration. It incorporates our industry's request for flexibility. And in meeting with Adrian and his team, we understand it also satisfies the city's objectives around public safety and risk and ensuring that design and construction is in accordance with city standards. Um, and so thank you for your time and your willingness to work with us on this.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions for Sue? All right, seeing none. I have one more registered speaker and that's Mr. Ken Crutchfield.
Uh, Mayor Heron and councilors, uh, you know, I wish I could be as enthusiastic. Uh, I didn't have the benefit of the consultations that the industry development had, but again, administration was following your explicit instructions to consult with him and they, and it happened. And unfortunately for me, uh, I really tried to stay on top of this particular topic. And I addressed council way back in June. And what I find is uh, there's new information even mean being made available today. And in the agenda package that was uh, issued on or only accessible to be uh, this past Friday. So the following comments uh, might appear a little out of line, but the bottom line here is that I believe that uh, there's a failure on the part of uh, the recommendation that I see that uh, allows for development below the floodline. Which I'll go on to explain why I have that concern. And the other one is this uh, provincial report. And uh, I appreciate with uh, Mr. Slate uh, mentioned, but uh, to me, this report has got to be made available to the public. They need to know and understand the bench line that establishes the floodline for the Sturgeon River. Okay, um, my background, uh, I'm well aware of legislative processes, interacting with developers, little changes, uh, wording, everything else like that. But uh, the bottom line here is that I've always had an interest in flooding the Sturgeon River based for some time. I saw the extent of the flooding in nineteen seventy-four and seventy-nine when people were evacuated uh, from their homes and businesses were flooded. Berms were subsequently uh, put in place and now protect the flooding of Millennium Park and businesses. Uh, and unbeknownst to many uh, users of Red Willow Trail, uh, that portion of the trail going from the east of City Hall to the uh, Brayside pedestrian bridge is actually the berm that was built to uh, as a consequence of the flooding that took place uh, back in the seventies. I welcomed years ago when the city of St. Albert and the surrounding municipalities uh, agreed to support the province's involvement in developing uh, a flood level assessment. And that assessment precipitated at the intermunicipal And that assessment precipitated the intermunicipal agreement to limit development below the one and a hundred year flood level adjacent to Big Lake and the Sturgeon River up to just below, or just above the Sturgeon Golf Course. St. Albert incorporated the designated floodline into land use bylaw. And since then, it appears people's memories of flooding have waned, yet we're confronted with a new reality that those earlier one and a hundred year elevations need to be a bit higher. Stream flow forecasting at, at best identifies that there will be an increased occurrence of higher flood levels. St. Albert has been confronted with a quandary. Hedge on the likelihood that flood risk will not risk, will not increase or take a precautionary approach. Stream flowing science is not perfect, yet it has a reasonable record of being fairly on the mark. The proposed amended wording to land use bylaw needs to be quite emphatic in stating only errors in determination the designated flood, flood line will be considered. Otherwise, a flood line identified in Schedule G is to be honored. That's what I recommend. The options put forward by administration after consultation with the development industry fail for the fact that they opened the door to development proceeding below the identified flood line. Proposed wording in section six eleven subsection five of the land use bylaw is the outcard used by developers. It was sought by developers. Hidden by assurance of advice by registered professional engineers and words like mitigation, we are somehow expected to accept such incursion below the flood line because their advice will minimize the risk of onsite and offsite flood damage. So I ask, when did minimize come to be an accepted standard when the whole objective to set is to set a line in the sand? And what if they've, and what if it floods? Who bears the risk and the burden of being flooded? Conversely, if the water flow scientists are wrong, St. Albert retains green space at worst.
You still have thirty seconds, you're good.
Conventional thinking is that flood risk is only minimized when development is kept out from below the one and a hundred year flood line. Let us not forget, advisors and developers come and go while the community and its citizens bear the consequences of their actions. Lastly, why is a flood hazard report, report prepared by the province not available for this hearing? Where, whereas the report for Carrot Creek is. This absence of the report makes me wonder what documents development officers and the city engineer will use to guide their decision making. The public is entitled to know what instruments are guiding decision making in the city of St. Albert. On your consent, this council will turn over responsibility to administration to safeguard St. Albert. Therefore, it is incumbent on this council to ensure the direction and expectations they pass aren't, are clear and direct in setting expectations. This council should set the boundaries of what is expected. I provided some ideas.
Mr. Crutchfield, you're at your five minutes mark. Oh, you were done. Sorry about that.
I see it. Okay, but thank you very much.
Well, no, and, and any questions of Mr. Crutchfield? Seeing. It's, it's been a long day.
Okay.
You know, I'm just going to let you know, Ken, that at Edmonton Metro Region Board meeting on Thursday, we had a really good presentation from some consultants who are doing a regional risk and vulnerability assessment related to climate, and they talked a lot about storm and heavier rainfalls. And that was Thursday and our staff actually managed to get it into our agenda package because it was really good information of what we're facing when we're building and building a resilient infrastructure and coping with some of these floods that we're expecting in the future. So I, I was really pleased with my counter, for my staff to get that in there so fast because it's good information and it's in the agenda package. I'm not sure if you saw it.
Yeah, it, it's just challenging for a citizen. You're having a tough time. Well, I'm having a tough time because I haven't been party to all these discussions, but you know, that's just it is that when a member of the public shows up here, in many respects, you're kind of like at a disadvantage. I've likened it to the fact that somebody is on death row and at the eleventh hour, fifty-ninth minute, you're asking for some compassion and maybe, you know, the grace of not being killed, but.
Yeah, we try to find that balance of not moving at the pace of a snail when it comes to municipal government, but at the same time.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So that's it for public presentations. I'll open it up, council, to any more questions of administration. I see Council Jolly's got her hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, just another question to admin. So just procedurally, so if Alternative One passes and this, the engineer is not satisfied with kind of plans that are brought forward, would that kind of go through the ESTAB process? Is that how that would work? Or how, how does that work when it's a professional engineer who has to, to approve it?
No, so.
Go ahead, Adrian.
Oh, I was just going to say, thank you for the question, Council Jolly. So know that the, the engineers' determinations are not appealable to ESTAB their final determination.
Okay, great, thank you. No other questions, Mayor.
Go ahead, Council, okay?
Really quick while you're, you're still there, Adrian. The report that Mr. Crutchfield was referring to, I was just, in your presentation, did you say that that is available? And it was a link or did you say it's not available?
I, I thought it was available. There's a link in the. I think it goes back to the original June, or maybe it goes to when we continued the hearing, but there's a link to the draft flood study page for the province. And I'm pretty sure that's where I ended up getting the, the report itself, so. I think I can look again, but.
No, I mean, it's, it's the provincial's report, but you, you obtained it all.
It's, it's the province's report, yeah.
All right.
Okay. Any more questions? I need a motion to close the public hearing? Council Kielik, go ahead.
But bylaw, or that the public hearing on bylaw one twenty twenty-three be closed.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. So remember a council that wants to start making motions? Council Hughes, go ahead.
That bylaw one slash twenty twenty-three be amendment two sixteen to the land use bylaw nine slash two thousand and five be read a first time.
Any comments on this?
I think that we've discussed this to death. So that's it for now.
Anyone else? Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Council Hughes.
That bylaw one slash twenty twenty-three be read a second time.
Thank you for that. Nothing further, I assume? Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Waiting for somebody? Oh, look, that motion passes unanimously. Council Hughes, are you going to do the alternative?
Yeah, we'll do alternative one.
Okay.
So that bylaw one slash twenty twenty-three be amended by deleting the entirety of section six point one one designated flood line in Schedule A and replacing with section six eleven in the attachment entitled Language for Alternatives One and Two for Consideration, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that. Anything to add?
This was the result of just collaboration and trying to find a compromise that would work with both the development community and the intention of what we want to have. And I appreciate the fact that administration is making sure that it's still saying, not simply bending to the demands and saying we're going to ignore our potential flood line, but rather saying that it's still fit both to our standards so that there is some compromise, but we are also trying to safeguard the the future of the people who may be living there and the developments that may be occurring. So thank you to Adrian and your staff for taking that time to try to figure out a solution. That's it.
Any more comments on that?
Yeah, just, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to echo Council Hughes's comments that bringing forward the alternative wording really is one of the key things that we started with almost three months ago, I think it was, where the developers asked for more consultation and to find a path forward through collaboration. That, that was basically what they had been asking for all the time, so I'm appreciate that the developer stuck with it and provided that input. I appreciate that Adrian and his team also participated in, in that. And as Mr. Bromley said, through consultation and collaboration, I think we now have clarity that allows people to, to move forward and, and understand what, what is a fairly, I wouldn't say complex, but very detailed set of rules around how we mitigate floods, flood risk, flood plains, top of bank, all of those things. So I think we've ended up in a good place. And again, really appreciate Adrian's team for bringing forward an alternative wording for, for this.
Anything to close, Council Hughes?
Nothing further.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. And finally, I need unanimous consent for third reading. Anyone online? Council Broadhead or Jolly want to make a motion tonight? Oh.
Well, I could make a motion.
I'm going to go to Wes. Got an agenda. We're in the minutes.
Okay, move that unanimous consent be given for the consideration of third reading of bylaw one slash twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Council Broadhead. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. I think. There we go, that passes unanimously. Council Hughes, you want to go back to?
Yep, for. The bylaw one slash twenty twenty-three be amended, be, as amended, be read a third and final time.
Awesome. Anything else? Okay, call for the vote. Vote is closed. That motion passes unanimously. So that finishes off our public hearings for today. We'll take a dinner break, I guess. It's five thirty-seven. How about ten after, ten after six? Does that work for you guys, Council Jolly and Council Broadhead? How far? Okay. Thanks.
Madam, madam, before you leave, Madam Mayor, so there's a very important special meeting. Is, is that going to be before or after the in-camera session?
After. I'm going to finish this meeting, adjourn it, and then we'll call the second one. Is that okay?
Well, well, I was kind of, I, I'm. Yeah, so I've got plans for this evening that didn't go into like midnight type thing, so. I was, could, could we, after you adjourned this meeting, could we hold the special meeting and then go into the in-camera sessions?
Sorry. I'm looking at Marta.
We would have, we can, we'll have to amend our documentation because when we call a special council meeting, we have to state the purpose. So we said the purpose is to consider bylaws eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. So we would just amend it to add an in-camera discussion with the CAO, and if we do that, then we can, we can accomplish it.
Can we, instead of adjourning this meeting, can we just?
You could recess this meeting.
Recess this one and go to that one. Okay, that's the old day. Council Broadhead, after our dinner break, we will recess this current council meeting and go into the special council meeting. And hopefully the documentation reflects that, and then we'll come back to this one. Does that work?
That is, that's very kind of you and, and express my appreciation to the rest of council as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Jolly back with us? See if they're here. Wes and Natalie, you with us? There's Wes.
And there's Natalie. Awesome. Thanks, guys. For everyone's information, I just had a quick conversation with Ledge. It's going to be very, it's going to be simpler if we actually do eleven council updates and then the Council Hughes motion before we actually recess because of their technology. So that's the way we're going to do it. And but we will recess before we do the in-camera portion. So, excuse me. We'll try to go through this fast. I cannot start my video because the host has stopped it. Anyone wants to let me turn my video on again? Uh, Council Kilik.
Sure, very quickly. Um, we did have our uh, regular environmental advisory committee um, where we reviewed a lot of success that the team had over the summer period hosting uh, different weed pulling events and uh, uh, clean up the river fast. Um, uh, weed identification, school engagement, summer program engagement. Uh, really, really good. We, we all think it's time off during the summer, but environmental services, uh, kudos to them. They were very, very busy. And then we had a quick agenda item where we discussed the um, activities that will be taking place for review um, of the uh, fall intake requests, requests coming from the public uh, for funding. And we also discussed uh, what, what we can do better to get more information out to the public. So uh, higher visibility on the Facebook pages, um, advertising, etc., to get more uh, grants brought in. And uh, thanks to Council Ramansky. She attended the Sturgeon Water, uh, Sturgeon River Watershed uh, meeting, um, which I'll let, of course, her speak to. Uh, and then our next couple of meetings coming up are CSAC uh, on the twenty-fourth and Edmonton Salute on the twenty-seventh. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it at, at that.
Thank you for that, Council. Okay.
Yeah, I'll be, uh, quick. Our wastewater commission, uh, next meeting is in November. In, don't meet in October. Policing Committee was canceled because unfortunately we couldn't reach quorum. Uh, the next one was the Internal Audit Committee. And as you see in tonight's agenda, uh, we met, proved the, uh, tentatively approved or recommended to council the internal audit work plan. More to come on that. And my, um, um, MRS Peak Committee is Friday.
This Friday. Alright. Just random Friday. Council Hughes.
Uh, we already talked about audits, so we're good. And uh, my meeting about garbage is not until next month. My waste minimization, so.
Council Ramansky.
Thank you. Um, I had, I was had quite a few things I was going to read through here, but I'll try and condense it quickly. So I did the, um, North Saskatchewan uh, Watershed Alliance on the Wednesday. That was the noon update. They do have a consulting company working for, uh, the many different municipalities and relaying stuff to the government. So at the following meeting, the street strategic planning meeting at Ashiston on October sixth, we went through policies that everyone could work together and they're planning for a strategic plan. And uh, the, the main things of note is that their directive is to have the riparian areas at sixty-five percent. Um, health currently their high intactness is at forty-six percent, moderate is at nineteen, uh, low is at ten and very low is at twenty-four percent. So there's lots of different avenues that everyone's working together there. We talked about, um, you know, how some water areas are down and some are up and why it's, uh, you know, somewhere on the nor, on the Sturgeon River that water is being directed to other areas which are affecting those specific things. So, um, all in all, in a shortened agenda, it was everyone, you know, finding a way to work together to get the, uh, the riparian health to the greatest level and, um, and doing it together and making the pathway along the whole riverway, uh, successful for everyone. So, uh, that's it. I can do a written update if council would like more of that as well.
Sure, or next month if you feel.
Or I could, yeah, I'll go forward next time. And then we did the Arts Development Advisory Committee and we are, we're discussing the uh, contestants in the juries for the mayor's celebration of arts, which is coming up. So that's exciting. And, uh, just, um, streamlining the, the process of, uh, Arts Committee and, um, uh, the, what they're responsible for and what they're going to focus on. And then, uh, there was some discussion over graffiti and repairs for that and certain murals that were moved and repaired. And Fowler not scheduled until spring. And, um, St. Albert the Great will have update in that, uh, coming soon too. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jolly.
Well, thank you. Um, so Home and Housing, I was actually on an airplane during our meeting, so I didn't attend the one from September. Um, Youth Advisory Committee did not meet forum and seniors advisory is tomorrow. So that's me.
Thank you. Council Broadhead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so I didn't have any meeting since my last update. Uh, so the, um, EMRB Audit and Finance Committee will, uh, consider the year end. Um, just after the new year.
Alright, thank you. Um, oh, I've got lots of notes from the convention. Uh, but I think, you know, those of us that were there that went to sessions that others should probably report back. I saw the laughing matters, uh, session, session on EPR. But the one that I will actually report on is the session on fight for your right not to party, where we had a good conversation about the possible introduction of political parties at the local level. Um, there was a Janet Brown poll that was done that said sixty-eight percent of Albertans would prefer to see municipal candidates run as individuals. Eighty-one percent of Albertans agree that if a political party, or if they are introduced into municipal elections, uh, municipal officials who are part of those political parties would vote along party lines and not necessarily in the best interest of their community. And sixty-nine percent of Albertans agree that political parties would make municipal governments more divisive and less effective. So it'll be really interesting to see where the provincial government goes with this. And then, of course, there was a, a resolution that passed, um, from the city of Brooks to keep party politics at, out of the local level. I can't remember. Have we had a, um, memo from, um, either Monty or Trevor on all the resolutions? Have you seen that? Yeah, we did. Okay, good. Yeah. But these are my individual notes on those three sessions, so I, I can just forward them if you can read my handwriting. So. That's it. Um, Council Hughes, let's go into your council motion. Okay, to read it and then we'll go to questions.
Just give me a second here. I didn't go to the motion area. This is a very long document. Okay. The city provide two thousand five hundred dollars in sponsor, sponsorships in twenty twenty-four to the Women Building Futures Program funded from the twenty twenty-three Council Contingency Fund. And with the recipients selected by the Women's in Building Futures Administrative Process.
Alright, any questions? Council Jolly.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious to know if they qualify for our normal grant process now that we changed the rules to allow kind of outside St. Albert organizations.
Council Jolly, that's a really great question. Um, I don't have the answer today, but I can, um, uh, talk with our grants administrator and see if it would apply.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have the information for your, uh, for tonight. But to, um, to add on to that, this is not to give Women Building Futures money as a grant. This is to sponsor somebody so they have the tuition so they can attend. So it's a different intention as opposed to saying here, we're giving you money to use as you wish. This is specifically so that one person who could not afford tuition or more than one depending on the cost of the program would have some, if not all, the funding available for them. So they could actually complete the program. So it's, it's it's a, a different intention than what we would do with the grants.
Okay, so I guess a question to you, Council Hughes. Why didn't you just use the sponsors, your sponsorship budget now that we changed the policy? You can put a, what is it?
It just said, we have a thousand dollars individually and you need more than a thousand to actually fully sponsor one of their tuitions. So, and there was, I'll just do this now. We don't have to deal through debate. Um, this is how much, we have three thousand dollars left in this. If we don't, it can go into surplus or it can go and help somebody get, uh, the tuition that they require so they can actually improve their lives. So, uh, I just had this as, we've done this in the past and I thought it would be worth having a discussion to have it in the future.
Any more questions, Council Jolly?
Oh, Ken has one.
Do we get to, uh, we have no.
That's Mckay. Go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I hit my.
That's okay. No, it was all good.
Um, we don't choose the candidate that gets to go. Who, who makes those choices?
I have it in there just that the building, building futures, like they'll have people that'll come in appliance. They can't do it and they can do the selection process. I don't want to have this be a burden on either us or our own administration to figure out who would be there. They definitely do have other scholarships available from other, um, organizations. They've got a process in place.
Have we already got a report back as to?
That's a, you know, I was just asking for that, um, before this. Um, I know that the money that was approved last year didn't actually get to when building futures until just quite recently. And so I've asked if they can give us an update, you know, the next month or so as to actually who was the selected recipient, regardless of how this motion goes, who the selected recipient was. I don't even know the person, but just the program and some just general information about, uh, where the, where it went and what the impact was to somebody's life. That's it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I accept your motion, Council Hughes. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I think I already said part of it already. I just, I, I realized that, um, I put this for, before as a budget and then Min said it would be better if it was just separate motions. So I'm respecting that. We're just bringing it forward for debate separately. Uh, we have three thousand dollars left in the council contingency. Yes, individually, we could just say we're going to put the thousand dollars towards it. I'd like to actually be able to have it so that somebody who can't afford to get their tuition has it fully covered because partially may also not allow them to complete the program. And I just, I look at this and think we're not, if there's something else that we're going to put that might towards the next two months, great. I didn't, I didn't see anything else that was coming forward that would be a threat to it. Um, and I just would like to use, instead of just saying goes into the surplus, I'd rather say we'd actually changed a family's life because the reality is that when somebody gets this and they're able to go through and actually have money um, coming in, that's enough that they're, the trades pay well. And they often come from minimum wage to being able to actually provide for their family. So in the event that we are able to, uh, approve this again today, what I look at is that we're not just helping one individual, we're probably helping them and all their children because their whole children's lives now go up the standard instead of living expectations of what they have and opportunities change for them as well. So, um, you know, I just, I look at the fact that we are worrying about affordable housing, but I would just love to be able to have people be able to afford the housing that they want. And that comes from being able to actually have the job paid that will allow them to do that. And, you know, being in the trades is not easy work. You have to be tough. Uh, but this is for people who actually say, you know, I, I wanted to change my life. I just don't have the means to do that. And uh, that's what this would allow us to do. So, um, take it or leave it. That's just kind of how I, and I, I would just like to complete the whole thing. And so, yeah, if you wanted to do another thousand dollars for yourself, go well, you're welcome to go ahead. But if we wanted to more than a thousand, it's a council motion and that's what I'm doing. So that's fair for discussion today.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. Um, that's actually a good idea. I, if that kind of fits within our policy, I'm happy to put my thousand dollars. I haven't touched it. Um, I'm voting against this motion. Um, these one-offs, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars last week, it was a thousand dollars. They're killing us. Um, they're, we're spending so much time on these one-offs. We have policies in place so that council doesn't have to debate a thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars for an organization that has no responsibility to, to demonstrate that the money was used for what it was supposed to be used for. So, um, um, yes, certainly, I'm, I'm happy to put my thousand dollars towards this, um, if, if it qualifies for, but um, as far as the council motion, we, we need to stop all of these. This is, yeah.
Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is clearly, um, not a handout. This is a hand up. Um, that, uh, will help women become self-sufficient and, um, I, I can't think of a nobler direction to go. So I'm very pleased, uh, to be able to support Council Hughes's motion.
Anyone else on debate? Seeing none, um, Council Hughes, you're probably going to be super surprised at my vote because it was me that brought it forward probably five or six years ago. I stopped bringing it forward for various reasons, which is why I'm not going to support your motion tonight. There is no guarantee that this money will go to a St. Albert resident. Uh, and I, I bought it through the budget process. This seems like, um, you're presupposing how we're going to spend a surplus before the surplus is even there. But, but it's fine. But, um, you know, there was an alignment to levels of service in our agenda package and they talked about the community events grant. Those, that's for an event. That's for something that our residents can take part in. That's why we support those that are organizing it. So I really do not see this as aligned. Um, there, my biggest problem is there's no guarantee this will support, um, anyone who lives in the city of St. Albert. This is not part of our municipal mandate to support education. Um, you know, if you were to see this one pass, where's the motion to support CDI College? Who does accounting and payroll type, um, training? So I, I, I'm fearful of some of these, as Council Jolly said, one-offs, a thousand dollars here, two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty, twenty-five hundred here and there. I think this council should be looking to, um, really be specific in how we spend our dollars, even if it's twenty-five hundred. And so that's why I stopped putting the motion forward years ago because this is really outside our, our role as municipal government and outside the city of St. Albert. No one's offering my kids free education.
Sure. Um, however this comes about, it's fine. But honestly, this is the process is if you want to do a sponsorship, you do it. We can go up to ten thousand dollars a year, I believe. This is money that's set aside that we can put onto sponsorships. I thought this was a noble cause and that it will actually help an entire family change the outcome of their destiny, of their future. So, uh, if you'd like to do an amendment, I'm more than willing to do a friendly. If you want to say that it has to be specifically to a St. Albert resident family, I, I guess I was implying that, I thought that, but if you would like to do it, anyone wants to put a friendly for it, I'm happy to do. Say, it must be selected by St. Albert. That's fine with me as well. Uh, but the reality is that these aren't one-offs. We just did one for the pow-wow for in August for five thousand dollars. If you want to do a sponsorship, this is how you do it. We're not, this is not going to affect the taxes. It'll either go into surplus or it won't. The council contingency fund, we are going to use it up or goes into surplus. So I'm not supposing what a surplus will be. I'm saying if you want to put this money to something else, then we'll put something else for debate. But at this point in the year, it's either you use it or you lose it. And, uh, the fifteen hundred for the year, the thousand for the hospice, that was so we actually have recognition at a community event, that's an Albert supporting the hospice. So, you know, and then, and then I get accused of having it be a one-off. This is actually something that's happened on an annual basis. So, uh, this is not going to fit the taxes. This will affect a, for a family's life. And, um, even if it's not in the motion and no one's saying anything forward, uh, looking at you, Mr. Fletcher, if it's possible that we can have communication that there's an expectation that it will be a St. Albert resident moving forward and we can get an update, uh, once the person has been selected to council, that would be lovely. Um, because I, I have not put in here any administrative requirements of how the city would like to put any other additional requirements in here. But we, I would like to have updates as, as to whether or not this money has gone to and to where it's gone and for whom. Um, and if it does not materialize the way it's supposed to be, then let us know by all means and we will no longer have that discussion. But the intention is to try to help somebody out. And it's all there is to it. So, uh, and sometimes we are supporting events and sometimes we're supporting families. And I personally would rather put twenty-five hundred dollars to somebody who can now start making a living to not have require affordable housing than to continue to have discussions about how we require affordable housing and then give them ten percent off their rent when they still can't afford to pay their rent. So this is when I saw this, I just thought it's, it's something that we can deal with that extra money. That's it. Thank you.
Sorry. Council Kilik, I'm sorry, did, did I miss you? You told, you spoke. Okay. Oh. Okay, what is it?
As long as Council Hughes will.
But we can't do, I'm not doing friendlies anymore because it's, it might change where everyone else votes. It has to be.
Well, we can do an amendment on it, like a vote. I don't care.
Yeah, do an amendment.
Um, uh, like to amend the motion by adding the words at the end of it to say selected by the woman building future administrative process, selecting a woman who is a resident of St. Albert.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor. Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I, I, I would say I, I can't guarantee that will happen, um, right? I can't.
Yep.
Just the way that the. Just the way that the sequencing works. So I sat down as we worked through this current iteration, right? And we've, we've got the right program, but ultimately we can indicate that as a preference. But if you put it as an absolute requirement, it may well and it's a bit of a chicken and egg discussion. I'm not sure.
One of the reasons I stopped putting the motion forward years ago is they would never guarantee that. Yeah. And I don't, and I never once heard if a St. Albert resident got it. I asked and they wouldn't tell me.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem still making this a condition, and if they can't find somebody from St. Albert, then they don't get the money, and we'll put it back into our surplus. So I don't have a problem saying that that's a condition. And so if they can't find somebody, they don't find somebody.
So we need a amending motion to say on the condition that it's a St. Albert resident.
Yeah, and to add the words, the recipient is not resident.
Marty, you're getting a workout today.
So in terms of adding the condition, I don't think we need to because the motion will be all encompassing. So if if the wording in the motion is all not met, it's already implied that they will not get the money. So as long as we say that they're a St. Albert resident, if we don't have a St. Albert resident, then they will not get the funds.
There you go. All right. Can we quickly vote on that amending motion? Okay. Okay, can I call for a quick vote on that amendment? There we go. Thank you. That was fast, actually. This whole thing is speeding up. All right. Do we need any debate on this? Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That amendment passes unanimously. Now back to an amended motion. Counselor Hughes, anything to add?
No, thank you for putting the friendly so that it was clear about the intention.
All right. Call for the vote. We can't see anything. No. All those in favor, hands up. That's Counselor Killick, Counselor McKay, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Bermansky. I can't see the camera. And Counselor Broadhead, all those opposed? Counselor Jolly and Mayor Herron. So that motion passes. All right, I will now call a recess on the council meeting for Tuesday, October 27th.
Sorry.
Oh, no, you guys want information request notice and motions. Let's do that first. Sorry. I just, it's on the other page. I flipped it. I know Counselor Killick has at least one IR to read in. But there might be more. Let me look. Go, you can start.
The voting just showed up. This IR has administration previously investigating providing a free Wi-Fi service to the downtown area. If not, could a high-level estimate be provided to support a BIR for the 2024 budget consideration?
Awesome. And you already read in your one about that dirt road in Sherro, right? Yeah, BIR, BIR. Okay, and then, so that's it. Did I miss any IRS? Okay. All right, anything else? Information requests? Any announcements? Counselor McKay? Counselor Hughes?
I know no one's listening at this point, but the Gazette might be, and it would be lovely if somebody from St. Albert does have an intention that they want to go into the women in trades, like to contact, let them know this is available. So somebody may not have thought about it before, and it's an opportunity that, like, don't, don't wait for them to find you. Go find them.
That's it. Counselor Bermansky? Nothing? Counselor Broadhead?
I'm good. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Jolly?
Nope.
Now I will recess. This meeting, and we will need three minutes, I heard, to start a new YouTube stream.
Yes, we'll all leave the Zoom, and we have a new Zoom meeting.
Oh, do we have to get out of the Zoom?
Yes.
Exiting Zoom.